Quiet, please. Good evening and welcome to the New York City High Bed Hearing on the Committee on Youth Services, jointly with the Committee on General Welfare. Please silent all electronic devices. At no time, please do not approach the dais. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. One of us is shining their arms will kindly assist you. Thank you so much for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Althea Stevens, Chair of New York City's Council's Committee on Youth Services. I'm joined by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, Chair of General Welfare Committee for today's joint hearing on preventative services for at-risk and justice-involved youth. We're also joined by Councilmember Williams and online, we are joined by Councilmember Caban and Councilmember Hudson. Recent reports of overcrowded at ACS' secure juvenile detention facilities underscore the importance of preventive services that provide positive influences in the lives of at-risk youth. Staffers at the facility reported that detainee youth are sleeping in hallways and classrooms due to overcrowded and curbing violence. This is unacceptable and we must do better. You must guarantee that young people are treated with dignity and respect. That starts with constructive interventions to avoid detention and holistic services to ensure young people remain on a positive path. Studies have shown that a lack of opportunity and resources can lead to crime and delinquency. That's why DYCD's investment in community development programs is so essential for young people who need support. About a year ago, the Office of Neighborhood Safety was transferred from the mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to the Department of Youth and Community Development. ONS compares a plethora of programs and services and talking a community-driven approach to breaking the cycle of violence among young people. My goal is to evaluate the efficiency of those programs and explore their success in helping young people to avoid crisis. DYCD also offers services for youth experiencing homelessness. I'm interested to learn how RHY providers help at-risk and justice-involved youth replace criminal behavior with positive practices. Like the Office of Neighborhood Safety, ACS offers a number of programs, access divisions, including family assessment programs, alternatives to placement, and respite care that are tailored to at-risk or court-involved teens and young adults. My aim is to facilitate and encourage greater collaboration between the two agencies to ensure that services are complementary and not duplicative. Both of those agencies manage programs that can turn a young person's life around and strengthen their partnerships in key in helping young people avoid the criminal justice system. I'd like to thank my committee staff for their hard work in preparing for this hearing, policy analyst Elizabeth Arts, committee counsel Christina Yama-Ti.
Yama-Ti.
Yama-Monti, right? Okay, great. Yama-Monti, and the entire A-Team back at the district office, and my communications director Jitai Brown. Now, I would now like to turn it over to Deputy Speaker Ayala for her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's hearing. My name is Diana Ayala, and I am the Deputy Speaker of the New York City Council and the Chair of the General Welfare Committee. As my colleague, Councilmember Stevens, stated, we are holding a joint hearing with the Committee on Youth Services on Preventive Services for at-risk and justice-involved youth. We are also hearing Intro 757, a bill sponsored by Councilmember Amanda Farias. Intro 757 would require that the Department of Social Services establish a system to obtain employment and income information from a third party for the city's use in making determinations for benefits and service eligibility. The local justice system for youth is operated by multiple city agencies. Among them is ACS' Division for Youth and Family Justice, DYFJ. DYFJ is responsible for coordinating the city's youth detention services and overseeing youth remanded under the juvenile justice system in New York City. Its functions are to build stronger and safer communities, prevent youth from entering the criminal justice system, provide therapeutic services to youth in custodial care, and help youth develop the tools and capacities that they need to leave the justice system for good. To reach these goals, DYFJ provides a range of juvenile justice services. While we know that DYFJ provides a host of juvenile justice services, it is undeniable that more can be done to ensure quality of care for youth. For example, as discussed at a general welfare hearing several months ago, ACS detention facilities are reportedly overcrowded, resulting in teens sleeping on the ground in common areas. This is unacceptable. We need to think through how we can prevent youth from entering into detention to begin with. Early intervention programs and services, such as the portfolio of preventive services models that ACS' Division of Preventive Services provides, are intended to prevent behaviors associated with delinquency and criminal justice involvement, and are designed to support the resilience of youth and develop their assets and capacities. Research has shown that youth who are in contact with the child welfare system are more likely to be criminal justice involved. Youth who have been put in and out of home placements and who lack placement stability have an especially high likelihood of becoming criminal justice involved. We need to think out of the box to promote early intervention models that support families and their children. We must prevent out-of-home placements and increase instances of reunification. Today, we want to evaluate the efficacy of preventive services offered by the city for youth in need of supportive intervention and those in contact with the criminal justice system. We also want to explore the potential for greater collaboration between ACS and DYCD to enhance programming. I look forward to hearing from the administration, as well as from the advocates on our oversight topic, and gathering feedback on Intro 757. Also, I would like to thank the committee staff who worked hard to prepare this hearing, Amenza Kilowon, Senior Legislative Counsel, David Romero, Legislative Counsel, Panina Rosenberg, Policy Analyst, Julia Harimis, Unit Head, and finally, my staff, Elsino Carnacion, Chief of Staff. We will now not be calling on Councilmember Farias, who will not be able to join us this afternoon. I will now turn it back to Chair Stevens.
I'll turn it over to committee counsel to swear in.
Hi, good afternoon. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin.
My name is Raymond Tumer, and I am the Associate Commissioner for Community-Based Alternative Programs, or CBA, in the Division of Youth and Family Justice, or DYFJ, at the Administration for Children's Services, or ACS. I am joined today by Stephanie Gendel, Deputy Commissioner for External Affairs, and Johann Peguero, Associate Commissioner for Close to Home, as well as my colleagues from the Department of Youth and Community Development, or DYCD. We would like to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala and Chair Stevens, along with the members of the General Welfare and Youth Services Committees, for holding today's hearing on preventive services for at-risk and justice-involved youth. At ACS, both in our child welfare and our youth justice work, we are intently focused on providing youth and their families with services and supports as far upstream as possible so as to prevent as many youth as possible from coming into contact with the foster care, juvenile justice, or justice systems. ACS contracts with 44 prevention providers across the city to provide a full continuum of child welfare prevention services focused on addressing the needs of the whole family. Through these programs, we are reaching nearly 8,000 youth ages 13 to 18 years old in evidence-based models and family support services. ACS is also in the midst of a three-year citywide expansion of Family Enrichment Centers, or FECs, going from three demonstration sites to 30 FECs. FECs are welcoming, home-like community spaces where neighbors connect, contribute to their community, find resources, and support one another. Currently, nonprofit providers operate 12 centers throughout the boroughs, with eight more slated to open in 2024. Our testimony today will focus on the continuum of preventive, aftercare, and community-based services ACS provides for youth through the DYFJ continuum. Specifically, this includes the Family Assessment Program, or FAP, the Juvenile Justice Initiative, or JJI, alternative to detention, ATD programs, and close-to-home aftercare, including our expansion of Fair Futures Coaches and work with the Mayor's Gun Violence Prevention Task Force. In all of these programs, we are working to engage and support youth and their families whenever youth are struggling or at risk, so as to help youth reach their fullest potential and avoid the negative consequences associated with the justice system. Since 2002, FAP has provided services to families seeking a PINS, persons in need of supervision, petition for youth up to age 18 who commit offenses that may not rise to the level of a crime but are unique to their status as juveniles, including truancy and running away from home. PINs placements have declined significantly since the inception of FAP, from 822 PINs placements in 2002 to 16 in 2022, and six in the first nine months of 2023. As the number of caretakers seeking PINs has declined, FAP has made our offices available and services available to any family struggling with difficult teenage behaviors. In 2022, FAP served 2,615 families citywide. FAP bridges the gap between teenagers and families in crisis by partnering with them to resolve and manage conflict through assessments, individualized interventions, and referral to a range of community-based services and support programs, including our own continuum of services. FAP is a voluntary program that seeks to keep youth on the right track and at home with their families. It is available to any family in New York City who is struggling with their youth's behavior. Families typically seek help from FAP if a child is skipping school, or having difficulties with teachers or classes, running away from home, using drugs or alcohol, struggling with mental illness, experiencing family conflicts, or exhibiting defiant or dangerous behavior. While families can reach out to FAP directly, in 2022, 35% of families were referred from New York City public schools, and 12% were referred by the NYPD. In 2023, FAP also became the differential response program for families impacted by the Raising the Lower Age, or RTLA, legislation that raised the age of criminal responsibility up from seven to 12 years old. Now, youths seven to 11 who commit an act that they may have been arrested for in the past can be referred to FAP for intake and assessment. FAP will meet with the family, assess what is happening with the youth, and if the families want, FAP will make targeted referrals for ongoing services. Through our offices located in or near the family courthouses in every borough, families in need can receive an assessment from a trained and licensed social worker who will make tailored referrals ranging from community-based supports to ACS-funded intensive therapeutic evidence-based programs that provide in-home crisis mediation and family therapy. Our continuum includes family stabilization, an intensive three-month crisis intervention aimed at de-escalating conflicts and creating collaborative service plans; functional family therapy, or FFT, a family therapy intervention for the treatment of violent, criminal, behavioral, school, and conduct problems with youth and their families where both intrafamilial and extrafamilial factors are addressed; brief strategic family therapy, or BSFT, a family intervention for children and youth with serious behavior problems and/or drug use which identifies patterns of family interaction and improves them to restore effective parental leadership and involvement with the youth; multi-systemic therapy, substance abuse adaptation, and intensive evidence-based therapeutic intervention that provides family therapy to the entire family in the home over a period of four months. Therapists visit the home multiple times per week and are available by phone 24 hours a day. Respite, where youth are enrolled in FAP, alternative to detention programs, alternative to placement programs, and close-to-home aftercare, are able to be in respite for 21 days, relieving parents of the care of their child when families need immediate relief in order to maintain or restore family functioning. Mentoring and advocacy, or MAP, which provides individualized strength and advocacy-based wraparound support services for up to six months. MAP youth who require longer-term support can choose to be connected to a Fair Futures coach so they can continue to work on their educational and career goals well beyond the MAP mentoring period of six months. JJI is an alternative to placement program, aimed at diverting young people who have been found by the family court as juvenile delinquents from placement in a close-to-home residence. Instead of placement in a group home, youth in JJI are able to stay at home and receive intensive evidence-based interventions, either MST or FFT, and services in the community, while being supervised by the New York City Department of Probation. The therapy engages the entire family and targets a range of issues, including mental health, substance abuse, peer difficulties, school-related challenges, and family troubles. Specifically, families agree to engage in mandatory JJI services as a condition of probation, and we begin working with the families within 48 hours of the court's dispositional hearing. Often, the therapist from our provider agency attends the disposition so that the intake paperwork for services is completed at court immediately after the hearing. Youth are assigned probation officers who are familiar with JJI. The youth's MST or FFT therapist and the probation officer conference weekly, participate in case reviews and court hearings, and work collaboratively to address any issues that arise. JJI serves approximately 200 youth annually. Therapy duration is typically six months but can be extended to one year if clinically warranted. Despite serving a population with increasingly high needs, JJI program completion rates have held steady at 65%. After issuing a new RFP last year, ACS assumed responsibility for the family court ATD programs in July 2023. Managing the JJI ATP post-disposition program, New York City's detention facilities, and the close-to-home placement program provides us with a unique perspective into the needs of the youth in the juvenile justice system, making it a natural transition for ACS to manage the ATD pre-trial family court program. The ATD providers, Cases, Good Shepherd Services, and the Center for Justice Innovation promote positive behaviors, healthy relationships, and problem-solving skills that will allow youth to remain safely in the community in lieu of detention. The model includes curfew checks and individualized supervision and services during the pendency of the juvenile delinquency case in an effort to reduce failure to appear warrants and rearrest. In addition, youth are connected to age-appropriate and accessible vocational, educational, and social programming that is tailored to their specific needs. With the new contracts and move to ACS, there are now ATD court liaison staff and family court to advocate for ATD programs when appropriate, a renewed focus on youth well-being as ATD service navigator staff connect youth to services based on individual needs during their time in the ATD program and beyond. And, as a way to incentivize participation, youth have the opportunity to earn a stipend of up to $1,000 for successful participation. The target population is youth between the ages of 12 and 18 who score as mid-risk on the Detention Risk Assessment Instrument. We anticipate serving approximately 300 youth annually. Despite all of the prevention efforts underway at ACS and other city agencies, there are unfortunately still youth for whom the courts detain or place them. Judges determine whether youth will be in detention while their cases are pending in court. Only youth with cases pending in family court can be detained in non-secure detention, and any youth detained by a judge in Supreme Court would be in secure detention. At this time, 96% of youth in secure detention have cases in Supreme Court. For the limited number of youth leaving secure detention and returning directly to the community, New York City Public Schools connects youth back to their schools, Bellevue, which provides the mental health services in detention, connects youth to mental health services in their community, and our case managers connect youth and their families to other services in the community. For youth returning to the community from non-secure detention, our nonprofit partners providing non-secure detention are responsible for connecting youth to any supports or services they need in the community. If a family court judge decides to place a youth at disposition, the youth would be placed in a close-to-home facility. Close-to-home placements are small, group home-like settings located in New York City and Westchester, where youth receive services and supports to help them address underlying needs and issues, and then successfully return to the community. All youth in close-to-home placements can receive up to six months of aftercare, and most youth are ordered to participate in aftercare for several months. These services aim to create a smooth transition from residential care to the community and can include education and vocational support, mental health and substance abuse services, case management and support services, referrals to community-based programs, and a Fair Futures coach. This past summer, Mayor Adams, along with the New York City Gun Violence Prevention Task Force, released a blueprint focused on upstream solutions to address gun violence throughout the city. The recommendations focused on prevention and intervention strategies through a public health and community development lens to address the root causes of gun violence. ACS appreciates all of the work of the task force and all of the agencies and entities working to implement the recommendations. We know that these types of early interventions are the best way to keep communities safe while promoting the well-being of youth and ultimately keeping youth and young people out of our detention facilities. ACS' expansion of Fair Futures Coaching for Youth in our Juvenile Justice Continuum is an important initiative in the blueprint. In April 2023, ACS rolled out the Fair Futures Model after working with the Center for Fair Futures to adopt the model to youth in close-to-home placements, close-to-home aftercare, and FAP. Youth in these programs now have access to coaches who can work with them until age 23, providing them with support and guidance so that when they are home in the community, their lives stay on the right track. Before concluding my testimony, I would like to take a moment to thank my colleagues at DYCD for their ongoing collaboration and partnership. Hundreds of youth in our foster care and juvenile justice programs participate in DYCD's continuum of after-school and youth employment programs, which are invaluable for the young people we serve. I want to thank all of the nonprofit providers working with our DYFJ continuum and the DYFJ team for all that they do every day working with young people and their families, and continuously focusing on how we can best help youth achieve their fullest potential. Finally, I want to thank the council for your interest in the services and supports that can help prevent youth from coming into contact with the juvenile justice system, and for your commitment to the youth and families working with ACS and our providers. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of information. I have a couple of questions about the testimony, but I know Deputy Speaker has a couple of questions in there as well, but I'm going to start with DYCD. But I also want to just say and give a shout-out to all the young people that's in the room today. Let me tell you something. Could we give it up for them? Like, it just warms my heart. And just the importance of making sure that, like, we're not just talking at them, like, they're part of the conversation, and that is something that I say a lot. And so, just to see so many folks who are here and know that a few of them are signed up to testify, we have some more on the way, just is really the direction we need to continue to be going and need to see more of that, and not just these type of hearings, but all hearings. Like, they need to be very much a part of these conversations. And especially because, for me, it's always like, how are we all working together? Like, ACS just talked about all these programs and things that they're doing, and making sure that they're also overlapping with the same things that, you know, DYCD got going on and they're working with. And so, you know, I hope this is like the start of us continuing to make sure that our programs are being rolled out, and as we are facing a very tough budget of thinking about how are we working smart, right, and working together? I don't know where this stuff is coming from. But I'm going to start with DYCD. I have a number of questions for you guys, especially around the Office of Neighborhood Safety. And so, when the mayor announced the transition of Office of Neighborhood Safety from MOCJ to DYCD, he said, "The shift will enable DYCD to integrate community violence intervention programs into the agency's existing programs, providing a more coordinated suite of services to New Yorkers who are at risk of gun violence." Has DYCD incorporate ONS services into their existing programs?
Good afternoon, Chair Stevens. So, Chair Stevens, yes, we've been embarking on what we are calling, and you're familiar with this, and thank you for attending one of these phases, but the first approach was...
I've attended a couple.
That's right, a couple. The first approach was, our entire ONS portfolio, especially the folks who are on the ground doing the cure violence work, canvassing communities, needed to know exactly what they were getting from the DYCD ecosystem. So, we did a series of meetings directly with them, DYCD, meeting with the entire team from those organizations throughout the city. Well, we started with the six precincts, focused precincts, but they learned about all of our programs. They were able to ask us questions about them. We talked about pathways and referral systems as well. The second phase of that, and we've been carrying this out first in the six precincts, and there's some other precincts for Rockaway, Staten Island, and part of the Bronx, but the second phase is, now locally, how do we have a meet-and-greet with those Cure Violence folks who are on the ground doing the work, that entire team, and all of our programs within a precinct? So, all of our services, after-school, community centers, our fatherhood programs, whichever programs we have, workforce programs, in that precinct, they got an opportunity to meet with those groups and meet each other. The third phase of this, and we haven't started the third phase yet, but it's going to be a community open house. Now, how do we advertise those services to the entire community and get folks out there? And again, Chair Stevens, thank you for attending several of them and supporting.
Of course. I would like to also acknowledge Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Russell, who are also here in attendance. Yes, I did attend several of the open houses, mostly in the Bronx. Those are the ones I attended, but, you know, it was a really good opportunity to see how people were actually excited about the collaboration, and they talked about that a lot of, like, "I didn't even know that was here," or "I didn't know that provider was doing that." And so, you know, I think more of those things need to happen, not just within one agency, but thinking about how do we do that cross-agency, right? Because I think that those are just as important as well to kind of, you know, know, like, how do we make referrals to, like, if a parent comes in and needs to do a PINs and things like that? And so, you know, I think, you know, you guys on Phase Three, I would love to think about what Phase Four and Five and Six would look like. I know I'm always giving you more work. In 2021, the mayor's action plan established a citywide youth leadership council, YLC, for young people living in Nyches Developments. The Nyches program trains youth leaders as advocates for safety and well-being in their communities. Please provide the breakdown of active leadership councils across the city, including the participating Nyches Developments and the number of young people enrolled.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. So, we are proud of the work done by the Youth Leadership Council. We currently have, and the Youth Leadership Council is comprised of young people from the 30 map sites. So, every map site has at least two representatives from those developments who are on the Youth Leadership Council.
What are the map sites? Which one are those? And could you explain a little bit about what those are?
You want me to read all 30, or you...
You can give us a synopsis, but...
I can, okay.
Don't read all 30. Don't do that.
We can send you a list of the 30 map sites, but the original, back in 2014, it started with 15 map sites, and then another 15 got added on.
But could you talk about what that is, because some folks might not know what the MAP program is?
So, the MAP program are developments where, I forgot the stat, I don't want to use it in testimony and I get the stat wrong, but it was a number of developments originally that made up a certain percent of crime and violence in Nyches Developments. And the focus was that we would focus resources at these sites, give residents and the neighborhood the tools and resources so they can actually activate and empower and make change directly. So, we implemented something called Neighborhood Stat, where the residents come together, they vote on safety initiatives and measures and solutions, and then we actually help support them in implementation.
Yep. I know that a number of those were taking place this summer, and went to a couple of those as well. So, in January 2022, the Office of Neighborhood Safety released the RFP to select new community-based implementation partners to expand Neighborhood Stat to 18 new Nyches Development. What Nyches Developments will Neighborhood Stat be expanded to?
Yep, and those were the add-on map sites, which include Jefferson, Johnson, Beach 41st, West Brighton, Whitman, Marcy, Sumner, Mitchell, Mott Haven, Morris, Langson Hughes, Linden, Tilden, Gowanus, and Wykoff.
And were those chosen in the same way the ones previously were, by looking at the crime stats at those development sites, and that's how those were chosen? Or was it different because it was a RFP that went out? Or...
Those were chosen within the same formula.
Okay, thank you. The mayor's Office of Preventative Gun Violence sponsors supportive services, including job training and placement programming through the Anti-Gun Violence Employment Program and Justice Plus programs. Please provide a breakdown of how many young people are enrolled in the Anti-Violence Employment Program, and what sectors and role are young people typically placed in those programs?
All right, I'll start with, I have Karina Christians here with me. I'll start with, I have Karina Christians here with me. Butchered your last name, sorry. So our current enrollment for FY24 is 1,700 young people. We had 912 work this past summer. The current enrollment for the school year sort of timeline, we have 572 currently enrolled and working. The target for the school year is 713. Sites have until January to complete their enrollment registration and get young people working. But Karina, you want to cover sort of the jobs that they-
Sure. So each Cure Violence site has a certain allotment of A G V P slots. And so they recruit young people to work both at their own locations and then also at other CPOs in the neighborhood. They'll also do, for example, shadowing the outreach workers and the VIs. And so they're bringing their participants in and really showing them what the services look like and doing job training with them as well.
So a lot of-
I was gonna add one item, Chair Stevens, I'm sorry. And imagine A G V P slots are similar to S Y P, less rigorous when it comes to the paperwork and more understanding in the worksite development that these are young people who may need additional supports. So the work sites are created in a way where those Cure Violence groups and CMS groups are also supporting our young people at those work sites. The idea is that they transition out of an A G V P slot into maybe a Work Learn Grow slot or S Y P slot.
All right, so I have so many questions. And so, is this a stipend? Is this stipend-based? Are they paid hourly? And if it's a stipend, how much? And yeah, let's start there.
Yep. So it is stipend-based and it depends on if you're younger youth or older youth. And then also-
What's the breakdown? What's the difference?
So older youth for the summer get $2,000 for the six-week period. Younger youth get $700 for the summer.
Also, we still giving a young youth $700. I keep telling y'all, that's why the kids don't want to be in it, but go ahead.
And then when we have the 25-week program that's throughout the year, so there's a fall/winter cohort of A G V P as well. And the older youth get $2,900, younger youth $1,400.
How many hours are they asked to work?
So over the summer, of course, it's more. So over the summer, the older youth have up to 25 hours and younger youth up to 15. During the school year, it's a little bit less to account for school time, so 12 and a half hours for older youth and eight hours for the younger youth.
Yeah, you know, especially for the summer, and I say this even with S Y P, giving a 15-year-old $700 or $750, I can make more money doing something else and getting in trouble. So, you know, it's things like that that I think that we always have to make sure that we're taking into consideration and really getting young people engaged. And you know, another thing that I'm hearing from young people, they're kind of sick of the stipends. They're like, no, I want to work. And it's the reality, they don't want to get stipends anymore because they're like, they want to work and they don't have other options, right? Because as a city, we haven't created or cultivated options for our young people to work because they can't go to the supermarket or the Foot Locker like we did a couple of years ago. And so these are the only options. And then, so we're like really handcuffing them to have these poverty jobs, right? Especially when so many of them needed to actually provide and help and support their families. So really want us to continue to like, think about that, and I'm gonna continue to push that issue because it is a huge issue, especially when we have a 21% unemployment rate for young people throughout the state, which is really high numbers. And if we don't start thinking about it, we're literally pushing young people in the route of like, going into illegal channels because it's more lucrative. And that's just the reality. The Crisis Management System provides several interventions and support services for outreach youth, including school conflict mediation to assist in challenging and changing the cultures around the violence. Do you have a borough-wide breakdown of schools where O N S has conducted these school-wide activities?
We do. Give me one sec. Okay, so total of the Youth Enrichment Service Programs, formerly known as the School Conflict Mediation Sites, we have 140 in total. The breakdown by borough in the Bronx, 36. Brooklyn, 58.
I'm sorry, could you, how much was in the Bronx?
Bronx, 36. Brooklyn, 58. Manhattan, nine. Queens, 31. And Staten Island, six.
Thank you. According to the Office of Preventative Gun Violence, from 2010 to 2019, data shows that crisis management had contributed to an average of 40% of reductions in shooting across the city. How did the Office of Gun Violence Prevention reach that figure?
So we don't have the backup that was used by the Office of Gun Violence Prevention to get to those figures. We'll inquire again. But we do have an example of a study that was done by John Jay in 2017 that found reductions in gun violence in both East New York and the South Bronx.
So we don't know how we-
That study that they did to get that 40% reduction figure, I don't, we don't have the backup to that. We're inquiring again and we're checking. If we get it, we'll definitely send it over. But I could cite another study that was done in 2017 that did show some reductions in, well, reductions in East New York and the South Bronx.
What studies, do you know the name of the study?
Yep, John Jay completed the study in 2017, and Karina could go over the stats.
Oh yeah, I remember that study in 2017, but it's 2023, right? No? It's a lot of years ago. So, you know, I think citing numbers around it is, we need up-to-date numbers, right? And you know, for me, I know what I say all the time. How are we evaluating this? How do we know what's working? And to have a study from 2017 and now being 2023, how do, obviously, things have changed, right? We had a whole pandemic, like, it's a whole lot of things have changed. And so thinking about how are we continuously evaluating and making sure that things are working? And if they're not, adjusting it and fixing and doing these things. So that actually needs to be a part of the work that we're doing. And I know you guys just had it for a year, so make sure we got something in part of the plan of-
10 months.
All right, here you go, 10 months. Y'all had it for a year. As the city emerges from the pandemic, what trends across CMS sites has the agency observed?
So I, no, it's so many potential answers on that. What trends across, like, we haven't done a complete study, but I can tell you anecdotally what we've been working with programs with. One is connectivity. Like, we realized that after the pandemic, folks are working in these silos. And that's, you know, I mentioned about the phases and bringing the folks into our ecosystem and connecting to our after-school programs. But we found prior to that that it wasn't the connections on the ground in local neighborhoods that should have been to better support young people and young adults. We're also finding, I would stick with that for now. And then we could, we'll survey across if need be, and we can get back to you with some additional responses. But I think the most piece that we've been dealing with is that, how do we better connect folks who are on the ground doing important work to better support young adults and families?
That's interesting. I would think that that would be one of the first things you guys would jump into before even, you said you guys took it over 10 months ago, right? I would think that would be the first thing you would want to do to kind of like, get an assessment of like, oh, what are the trends? What are the things doing even before jumping in? But, you know, maybe that's something I should think about. The Atlas program provides a suit of services, including mentorship, family therapy, cognitive behavior, therapy, opportunities for employment and education to young people and adults awaiting trial who choose to participate in a program. Can you share a breakdown of borough-wide numbers of young people enrolled in the Atlas program? And can you share a borough-wide breakdown of the Atlas program providers? And what criteria and metrics are used to measure the success of this Atlas program?
Sure. So we have six providers that provide functional family therapy, F F T, and we provide both for youth and for young adults. So we have an adaptation of F F T that pulls them up into 25. Most F F T stops at 18. And so we have one provider that does that adult adaptation and five providers that do the youth services. So when we look at the providers that serve youth, we have 42% of youth are served in the Bronx, 10% in Brooklyn, 11%, Manhattan-
I'm sorry, could you say it a little bit slower? The Bronx is 42%?
42%. Brooklyn is 10. Manhattan, 11. Queens, 23. And Staten Island, one. And the reason is because of our six providers, one is citywide. Rising Ground has three teams and they, no matter where a person lives, they'll serve that young person. And then five of our providers are really borough-based and neighborhood-based. So we have Bronx Connect that serves young people, juveniles in the Bronx. We have Living Redemption that serves young adults in Manhattan. In Queens, we have the Queens Community Justice Center, serving young people. And in Brooklyn, we have Rise Borough that's doing the adult adaptation. And Staten Island, we have Central Family Life, and they're serving young adults as well. And they're really just getting started. So we have some that are established for a couple of years and some pretty new providers. When we look at the older youth, 19 to 25, they're 25% in the Bronx, 26% in Brooklyn, 16 in Manhattan, 17% in Queens, and 13% in Staten Island.
I mean, just thinking off these numbers, 10% in Brooklyn, just that, to me, jumps out. And I'm not even a Brooklyn person. I don't ever go hard. You see that, right? I want my credit for saying something about Brooklyn. I know, that's why I'm saying something. All right, calm down, enough. Simmer down. Yeah, that just seems really null, 10% for, you know, these type of services for a borough that claims to be the biggest borough, but I guess they really are.
Let me speak to the recruitment and referral.
Sure. So, you know, Atlas began during the pandemic in August 2020, really for young adults who were in the criminal court system. And we've been expanding to serve young people who are in the family court system or who are just being referred because they're being referred by Y C Os, they're being referred by family members, they're being referred by the CPOs who are working with them. And I think it's also important that our providers are all also map providers and CMS providers as well. So it's one of the ways that we're really knitting together our resources. So how are we getting clinical services into the providers that are doing street outreach and doing C V work? And so the Bronx is so, so big with the youth because we have this incredible provider, Beneath Alliance and Bronx Connect, who are also really doing that outreach and connection with Release the Grip and also connection back to other city agencies. So Legal Aid will refer, the Law Department refers. And so I think certainly we can-
But yeah, I mean, but then that still doesn't, I still don't understand why then Brooklyn would be at 10% because they also do-
Because our provider there does-
Just adult.
Does the adult program.
So you don't have a youth provider? Because I know you said the adult provider is the Brooklyn one, so you don't have a specific youth provider in Brooklyn.
Exactly. So we have Rising Ground that has three teams that serve all five boroughs. And they get their referral pathways through C J A. So C J A, any person who meets the criteria of repeated arrests and it's not their first arrest and they don't have a perfect score in their release assessment, the Criminal Justice Agency does outreach in courts by phone, by mail, by text to really reach those people who are having escalating court contact and meet the criteria for the program for F F T, which serves young people. And so they are primarily serving people with criminal court cases.
I hear you, but like, again, this is not answering the question, right? Because it's evident that obviously you have providers who are in these boroughs who are doing outreach and the work. And the citywide one clearly probably isn't a Brooklyn-based organization, which is why Brooklyn is getting the short end. And so then how do we remedy this? Because the things you're saying, I hear you. Okay, great, but it's not happening because they're only at 10%. And so how do we then change this? Because that's why my other question was, what's the criteria or metrics for success? How are we determining that this is successful? And from nothing else other than the numbers at 10%, that just for Brooklyn seems very low.
And so, one piece on the metrics. So, and we, one of the pieces that we've been doing, again, is informing folks about the program, about Atlas. How do we strengthen that referral system? The idea is that we get to the highest-risk young adults who are out there, many of which who have been released on armed reconnaissance. And we're trying to get them from stopping to recidivate before the court date, if you will. But we'll work on a plan to see the gap in the Brooklyn recruitment and why that's showing up that way. But Karina can touch on some of the metrics and how we show outcomes in Atlas.
So within the program itself, F F T is a family-based relational program. We're looking to improve communication skills, strengthen relationships, move young people towards autonomy, really strengthen those protective factors like kinship, relationships. A lot of our youth are very isolated. And so how do we not just reduce the risk factors, but really connect them to things that are protective? So their community, you know, their family. We have young people who are just extremely isolated. This is an entirely voluntary program and we're doing outreach to them. We reach them because they're coming through court. And so we're doing cold calls and we're outreach to young people and families to invite them into a family therapy model. And so one of the ways that we, as a program, measure success is, are we continually improving our engagement rate? So in year 22, which was our first really full year of operation, our engagement rate was 40%. And then in 23, our engagement rate went up to 60%. And so that means you're getting a cold call and someone's telling you, there's a really great program out here, people who are disconnected, who are distrustful of systems. And we're getting them into services now at 60% and we'll continue to grow that.
A cold call sounds, that sounds interesting with, especially with folks who typically are suspicious of institutions and systems. So why aren't we doing a better job of like, having trusted members who they might know? Or maybe youth doing these calls? Because like, a cold call to be like, hey, we got these programs. They're like, all right. And they're probably like, are you gonna give me a job? Because I know that's the next thing that comes out of their mouth.
That's absolutely far the conversation. And I, you know, so to be, there's all sorts of ways in. C J A is our primary referral partner. They have a really amazing outreach team of credible messengers who do the phone calls and do the text messages and do the emails and go to court dates, so are physically in those spaces. They're not our only referral source. Again, Y C Os, Defense Counsel, the Law Department. We're reaching young people wherever we can. But the calls, because of the skill and the credibility and the relevance of the people calling, they're able to get most months between 60 and 70% of people consenting to learn more about the program. So it, and yeah. They do, they do quite a good job. But we, every door is a good door to come into our program. And so that's also part of the reason why we're working with organizations that have credibility in their community. So like, a Living Redemption has F F T as well. A Living Redemption is going to be doing really different outreach models than some of our other providers. They did a Therapy Comes to Harlem event. They had pop-up therapy in St. Nick's Park. So, you know, we do all of the above. And our goal is to make sure that people aren't falling through the cracks because someone might not meet them or know them. So that's why there's a systematicness of making sure every single person coming through the court system that's eligible gets a call, gets an email, gets a text message. So that part is really about the systematicity of it.
No, I hear you. But, you know, I think, and I know some of the providers and they're, and they're great and they're really credible. And that's why even with the cold call, I think we probably need to change the language because a lot of it isn't cold because they have connections with some of these young people already. And shout out to my Youth Advisory Board who just walked in. Look, I told y'all, my heart is filled with these young people showing up and being civilly engaged. So my next question is more around like, the cornerstones and the beacons and how are we using that as a touch point for young people who are at risk of being justice-involved?
So twofold. One, it's that sort of relationship on-the-ground ecosystem building that we've been doing with the phases. Like, one, they need to figure out, who did it, who did it refer folks to? How do they activate? How do they get the additional supports that CMS provides to the work that they do at a community center or an after-school program? I do want to point out and highlight that we do have four compass programs located in non-secure and secure locations, all operated by the Center for Community Alternatives. They're literally going in with a youth development program in these secure locations, in the non-secure locations, and working with young people, making those staff connections to someone who's caring and mentoring, but also giving those young adults the opportunity to develop and build their self-efficacy, the belief in themselves, that they can do more and do things positively, but also making those real-time connections. So when they do return home at any point, that they have this sort of new foundation that's being established and connecting back to a beacon or cornerstone program in their neighborhood.
And I'm asking a question I already know the answer to. But I know you guys have been doing this, this collaboration and having folks talk together and just even thinking about the application process. And I brought this up before, and I, you know, how do we get there? Of thinking about how can we on the initial application start asking about the other services that young people need? And having like, that be part of the intake to also connect them to all these other things, right? Like, as we're thinking about the collaboration and having providers talk, but like, even having on the application a laundry list of other services- of other services that are provided in the area and the community assessments and, you know, the, the goal would be when you guys are doing joint, um, information sessions together to have those be on the application. So then we could have an inventory of what young people actually need help with, right? Whether it's a job or they need support around homeless services, a career readiness, of really doing an intake so they can tell us upfront what they need. Is that something that you guys are looking to move towards?
I would say, don't quote me on this, but we're in testimony, right? So two-fold. One, on our enrollment form, we do have several questions. I need to, I don't want to state what they might be. I want to get back to you on the enrollment form. The other side of this coin though is, and we're learning with middle school, high school students, they don't want to fill out eight pages. So we, we're also figuring out how do we implement a feedback mechanism? Whether it's through survey, whether it's through sending out, um, a survey through our providers after they are already enrolled, to give us that, that information.
I, I think we definitely have to move in that direction because I think, you know, I mean, and I yelled about this at SYEP. We, we're asking them to bring in a connaissance bill and all this random stuff, but like we're not actually getting and gathering information. And I know some of that stuff has changed, but we're not actually asking for information that they can use and be a little bit more useful. I have more questions. Okay, I'm sorry.
So we do a community needs assessment as well. So we can get you the results, um, back from that, from the last one that we did.
Yeah, I know, I was on it. But thank you. I have quite a few more questions, but I do want to make space for my colleagues and deputy speaker, and so I'll come back in a little bit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in the November plan, um, well, actually the November plan included a baseline peg of four point two million dollars. This is for ACS, starting in fiscal year twenty twenty-five for ACS's preventive services. This resulted in a reduction of two hundred and forty slots across Brooklyn that were utilized for family treatment and rehabilitation and functional family therapy programs. Can you tell us, one, um, how were these savings calculated? And two, since there is a reduction in slots available for this program, what alternative programs can ACS provide that will assist families who need these services and are at risk?
Thank you Chair for that question. Um, I just want to start off just to clarify, um, that this, the November modification peg that you're referring is related to the Child Welfare Preventive Continuum and that there is no peg related to the preventive continuum that Ray testified about. So I just wanted to make it clear about which prevention continuum. We're talking about this on the child welfare side. The prevention peg savings is four point two million gross, which is based on the total fiscal year value of the two providers that received the reduction. The way we identified the two providers was looking at the two lowest utilization programs and ensuring we weren't losing services for the same model in the catchment and only looking at certain program types. And so just as an example, the FFT adaptation program that we took down in Brooklyn had a capacity of a hundred and forty-four slots. And, um, the utilization at the end of fiscal year twenty-three was twenty percent. Um, and.
Twenty percent of the one hundred and forty-four?
Yeah, had, had, were full. Um, and for fiscal year twenty-four, for the first quarter, it was eleven percent. Um, and then using the second one as an example, which was in Brooklyn, had a ninety-six, has a ninety-six slot capacity. Its utilization was twenty-one percent at the end of fiscal twenty-three and was twenty-two percent for the three-month average of the beginning of fiscal twenty-four. So as we look to see how we can be most effective and efficient with our programs, we looked at these ones that were really underutilized. The family, the programs don't end until June. Most of the families will probably have completed their program by that time. Any remaining families will transition to another program in their community. All of the two catchment areas that we're talking about, ha, we have programs with the same model in those catchment areas with vacancies available. So there won't be, no family will fail a reduction.
Okay. Um, in cases where therapeutic options are offered to, uh, to families, such as mediation, counseling, substance abuse services, domestic violence programs, anger management or other mental health services, where do families end up being referred to? Is there a geographical location that's taken into consideration? How does that work?
Do you mean generally, how do we refer families? So we have, um, a unit, this is on the child welfare side. We have a unit that's part of their role is helping connecting families to the appropriate service. If it's in coordination with a child protection case, they will work with a child protective worker. But people can come forward seeking prevention services on their own and don't need that. Um, and so it's really about assessing what kinds of needs. Some of our programs focus on working with babies, some with teens, some have substance abuse, some domestic violence. And it's really involves really getting a sense of what is the right program for that family. All of our program models are available in every catchment area, um, and we have openings in our programs.
I think that the question was really, um, it, we, we included it because there's a concern that we oftentimes rely on community-based programming that doesn't necessarily exist in every community. And so how are we ensuring that we're not only advocating where we see a, a deficiency, right? A lack of, of a program that we have a higher percentage of young people, you know, in, in need of? Um, and how do, how often are our kids having, or in families having to leave their own communities to access these resources? And I, I say that because especially specifically for the mental health, um, you know, services. I often hear, you know, well, we're, you know, we're, we're moving to a community-based model. People are being referred to their local clinicians. And I'm like, what local clinicians? We have probably three. And they have waitlists of up to a year. So who are we referring to exactly? And who is picking up on the fact that we only have three, that we have a high waitlist and that we may need more?
So one of the benefits, I would say, of our full continuum, prevention continuum on the child welfare and the juvenile justice side, is most of the services are actually in home.
Okay.
Um, and the therapists or the caseworkers and social workers come to the family's home. So that helps alleviate the issue that you're raising. I don't know if you want to add to that.
I think that's great. I love that. Now for young families that are not ACS, under ACS's umbrella in any way, shape or form, does DYCD do any of these referral-based, uh, programs? In any of your community centers?
Deputy Speaker, we'll start with Atlas.
Just to also say that, uh, our Atlas therapeutic services are, are home-based as well.
Home-based as well? Okay, great.
It's all based on what the family's comfortable with. That could be, uh, their home. It could be a local spot that they feel.
They're fantastic. I used, when I used to work in senior services, my, uh, we, we, uh, we had a program that did that. And it, it, it really does, you know, wonders because it takes away the stigma of having to go into a facility and, um, and I think that we're advancing in the right direction in terms of, you know, um, being able to do this now, um, virtually. And so, um, that's great. But we, you know, the, so, so go ahead. I interrupted.
The, I mean, the virtual piece is interesting too, because we again started August twenty twenty. And so a family therapy model has, um, that the virtual allows family members who might be, there might be, you know, someone in Pennsylvania who is really important to that young person's life who can also come in. So of course we've moved much more almost entirely to in-person, but we still use in Atlas the, the virtual because it allows family members to come into the, uh, family session, even if they're not physically in the five boroughs.
Okay. Go ahead.
But Atlas is ju, is specific for court, just the court-involved youth that are?
That's the majority of our referrals, but we also have, because we work with these community-based organizations, we also, if they know of a young person who's at really high risk of violence through their own, um, determination, we allow them to serve those young people as well because we know that they have really good insight into who's, um, at risk in their neighborhoods.
But can like cornerstones or beacons or some of the other programs refer as well? In your Saturday Lights program?
Um, i- i- in regards to the respite programs, the respite programs, um, can you tell us who the providers are? And how many young people and families are currently enrolled in using these, uh, these care programs? Um, and how many use this program annually?
So, uh, Deputy Speaker Ayala, thank you for that question. Our respite program is managed by a community-based organization called Rising Ground. Uh, they served fourteen people in two thousand twenty-two, fourteen young people in two thousand twenty-two. It's a very small program. We have five beds citywide, one in each borough. And so right now we don't have any young people in the program. The respite program does require both the caretaker and the young person to agree to enter into the program. So then it's a twenty-one day period where Rising Ground works with the family, uh, to repair the underlying issues with the family dynamic. And then the caretaker has to agree to accept the young person back into the home after the twenty-one day period. Uh, and so we did serve, um, I'm sorry, four, sixteen people, sixteen young people in two thousand twenty-two. And we have served fourteen young people so far in two thousand twenty-three.
What, what does the ideal candidate look like? Like a, 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 a young person that would use these services? Like what is a scenario where they would, you know?
So our respite program is really to offer a cooling off period to the family. So when the family gets engaged in a domestic dispute or that young person is at risk of, you know, exhibiting dangerous behaviors and the caretaker is really just sort of at wit's end and needs an immediate response and an immediate, uh, respite period. Those are the young people that we typically serve. But we could also take referrals from our Alternative to Detention programs, from our FAT program. So any young person who is really exhibiting challenging behaviors at home is eligible for our respite program.
What is the age?
Uh, it's up to age eighteen. So we can take young people between twelve and eighteen, I believe.
Between twelve and eighteen. And the referral has to come from whom?
The referral can come from anywhere, but they typically come from our Family Assessment Program, Alternative to Detention Programs. Close to Home can make referrals, uh, JJI can make referrals. So the, 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 the young person can come through any door, um, and, and we will serve them. I think the biggest thing is that they have to agree to enter into the respite program.
I'll just add, so that's on the DYFJ respite, that we are in the process of actually, within the next month or so, we should have a second respite program on the child welfare side, um, that will have ten beds also through Rising Ground and actually offer respite to younger children, um, than the DYFJ system.
So i- if, if, if I'm hearing correctly, we're not, we have no, no young person currently in care. And it's, what, what is the need? Why are we adding additional beds and how are we getting, like, what's the difference between the two?
But so it's sort of two different programs. Um, on the, on the child welfare program, it's going to be for kids, young kids, infants. I don't know if someone, it's, it's sort of a, it's a, up to age, um, fourteen. That program is really about the parent needs a time for their, to be, have their child somewhere else for some reason. Um, and so they can do also up to twenty-one day respite, um, and we'll have ten beds for that. So it's not foster care, but it's an opportunity for a parent in need to have a time not with their child for whatever reason. The program hasn't started, so I don't have an example, but you could think of the examples.
Would these be like, what, a building? Like, does it, does it look, does it look clinical? Or is some, is this somebody's home? What is this?
It's a home.
Somebody's home?
Yeah.
So it would be like a foster parent, but not a foster parent?
Correct. And we wouldn't, it, it, it's completely voluntary and something the parent has asked for, um, that we would use that for. We can, uh, once the programs actually started, we're, we can share better examples of how it's been used. But separate than the program Ray is talking about is more like a conflict between a parent and a child and needing time to be apart before bringing back together.
During, and during the time of separation, is there any intensive case management? Is there any maybe, I don't know. I mean, listen, I, I have four children and I was a different parent to the, the two younger children than I was to the two older children. I had them when I was very young, when I was very broke, when I was very stressed out, when I was a single parent, when I had to go to school and go to work and drag two kids with me. It was a very, very different situation. Um, it was very stressful. I, I, you know, I probably would have gone to the respite myself and left the kids. But, but, but in all seriousness, how I felt, and I've always been very honest about that because it's an experience, you know? It's a, it's an, it's an experience. And so I wonder, okay, so we get the kids out, we got a cooling period time, whatever, everybody's chilling and what, what, you know? What happens during that time to ensure that we are learning to work with, with these children, right? In my case, I had a, a child that had ADD and who was driving me bananas. I did not have the coping skills to address a lot of his needs, right? And so I had to go to therapy. And in therapy, I learned, uh, techniques that allowed me to, you know, um, get him to listen, to not have to use corporal punishment, uh, or even having to threaten, you know, corporal punishment. But it was a learned behavior. Somebody actually, uh, you know, took the time to teach me, to work with me, to hear from me. Is that happening in that time?
Yes, absolutely. And so during the twenty-one day period, our therapists are working with the young person and the parent and, and the caretaker individually, and then brings them together as well to talk about services, engage in services. Twenty-one days is not enough to fix the situation, right? So it's a, it's a triage period. But the good thing, uh, about DYFJ is that we have a full continuum of services. And so after the twenty-one day period for respite, we look to see what other services the family might benefit from, right? Perhaps it's FFT where we engage the family in family-based therapy, again, in the home, in the community, where it's comfortable for them, where they can get a longer-term intervention. So the respite is really just sort of a triage period for things to cool down, uh, the, you know, to implement services, begin therapy and, and determine what the, the family really needs, what service is most appropriate, and then we make those referrals as appropriate.
Do you speak to the young people after the fact to get feedback on what the experience was like living in somebody else's house?
So, uh, our providers, um, you know, work with, they are sort of like, you know, therapeutic foster homes. You know, our providers are working with the foster parents to make sure they're appropriate. We do require our providers to issue a survey to young peop, to, to the family after the services are over. One of the things that we're looking to implement are post-services surveys, where we reach out to families after our services are concluded to determine, you know, how they felt about the service. But it, it's not something that we do on a regular basis. We do randomly reach out to families, but I can't say that every family that's gone through our respite program, we've talked to the young person.
No, I appreciate that. Um, on July first of two thousand twenty-three, Non-Secure Detention and Non-Secure Placement Provider Sheltering Arms announced that the, that due to severe financial challenges resulting from the pandemic, they have been forced to cease their operations. Can you tell us how many NSD and NSP places Sheltering Arms had and how does ACS plan to handle the reduction in available places?
So the good news is that ACS was able to transfer, to find a new provider to take over the Sheltering Arms contract, and there were no reductions. Um, the new, the new provider is Rising Ground. Specifically Sheltering Arms operated two non-secure detention sites, two non-secure close-to-home placement sites, and one limited secure close-to-home facility. ACS was able to transfer the contracts from Sheltering Arms to Rising Ground without interrupting our programming and not impacting our capacity to serve youth.
Is there any level of support that ACS is able to provide to organizations that are facing, you know, financial struggles, uh, like Sheltering Arms that were providing, you know, decent services and just, you know, kind of, I guess, hit a really rough, turbulent time that rendered them, you know, broke?
I, I don't want to speak to Sheltering Arms in particular, but I would say in general, we work very closely with our providers and with Kafka to hear what their needs are and see how we can address them. I would like to think we're one of the better agencies at making sure our contracts are registered on time and that we're paying our providers. I guess they're here and they could testify about whether or not that's true, but I'm pretty sure it's true. And our finance team, um, does office hours with the provider agencies. And we really look to see how we can best support our providers. They are an, an essential, as you know, part of the work. We can't do the work without them. And so, um, ensuring that they're stable is critical to the children, families of the city.
Yeah. I, I just, I felt like it was very abrupt and somebody should have known, right, that they were in trouble and that. that they were in trouble and then maybe creating some sort of transition plan. Because I think inadvertently, you know, the Rising Ground actually lost a lot of funding, right? Because there was that, that gap and, you know, in the middle of budget, and they're still doing the work. So I think there has to be that, that level of support for our nonprofit providers is really critical because, you know, we need them, and so we want to make sure that they're stable and strong. And then in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, ACS, ACS's Fair Future Program, which previously helped foster youth transition from foster care to independent living, was expanded to serve justice-involved young people aged twenty-one to twenty-six who are in need of intervention. How many young people in justice-involved youth have been served by the Fair Futures Program? And what are the metrics for success used to evaluate the efficacy of this program?
So as of December seventh, two thousand twenty-three, there were ninety-four close-to-home youth with Fair Futures coaches and twenty-nine youth from FAT with coaches. So based on my math, that is a total of one hundred and twenty-three? So one hundred and twenty-three youth are currently being coached in Fair Futures through the Juvenile Justice Program.
I'll, I'll just add that we use the initial time to work with the, with Fair Futures on the plan to how to adapt the foster care model to juvenile justice. And so the juvenile justice portion officially started in April, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. Will there be an expansion of the Fair Futures Program to the justice, to the justice-involved? Or will it be eliminate, oh, wait, let me read that over. Will the, the expansion of the Fair Futures Program to the justice-involved be eliminated or reduced in the next round of budget cuts?
Not to our knowledge.
Not to your knowledge, okay, great, great. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to my, my, my colleagues, but before I do, I just really need to go on my mother rant a little bit because one of, you know, I, as, as, as we've been having conversations and I've been having conversations with the commissioner, you know, we, we speak, you know, weekly. We're looking into a reduction of numbers at the detention centers and, and trying to figure out, you know, why we are in a position that we are, that we're seeing ourselves in today and why so many of the young people that happen to be in detention happen to be there for very serious felony cases when we are spending so much money on preventive care. I go out into my community and I'll tell you that, you know, if, if I could, if I had the power to do it, I would strip everybody of their money and I would start over. I would, because I have gone and, and had conversations with my young people and, and tried to have a conversation where I asked them to imagine a world that is intended for them, where they could live with the resources that, that, you know, that they, that they, that they wish they had, right? And so when I ask them, well, what are those things that you would like? They're like, Ms., can you please bring in garbage cans? Ms., can you bring somebody to pick up the dead rats and the dead animals on the street? Ms., can you do something about the gun violence? These, I'm walking into very dilapidated community centers with leaks, stinky bathrooms, no maintenance, no staff, usually staffed by young people, which I completely support. But that doesn't give, that doesn't mean that there doesn't, that there should not be an adult in the room that is guiding, that is providing staff training, that is ensuring that the space is clean and ready for when kids are coming, that there's not food all over the walls, that you could see out the window because they're not so disgusting that you can't look out of them. The fact that these kids have never left their community and gone into a space that is beautiful and welcoming and ready for them with enrichment services and that they're learning and playing and don't want to go home, those services do not exist in our communities. They don't. And I don't understand why, because I feel like every year, this council is consistently fighting and fighting for more and more money to ensure that these services are being provided. So either we're lacking oversight, we have, we're not, we're not expecting much of, you know, of some of our providers, and I'm not, and I'm not speaking for all of them because they do, you know, really, you know, many of our providers do really, really good work with what they're given, what they're provided. But that's bare bones. And so I have to get my kids out of East Harlem to go to Asphalt Green on the Upper East Side so that they can see what a functional, beautiful space looks like. Why? What's so different about those kids? What's so different about the community programs in the South Bronx? If, if I went there now, there are probably three kids there, three young people. We have the highest rates of gun violence. We're doing absolutely, you know, we think that we're doing things on the paper. It looks like we're doing, you know, a lot of work. In these conversations, it sounds great. But the reality is that on the ground, when I walk into my community centers, either there's no one there or there's nothing happening. And that, to me, is a failure of what, whatever system or structure we're creating here. And somebody has to be responsible for that. I asked the Commissioner of DYCD for a tour of some of my, my sites. We had a conversation about workforce development, the importance of workforce development. As a young person, now I'm not that young, but when I was a younger person, one of the things that got me out of, you know, that world that I grew up in, and I'm talking about a world where I was in homes where I was seeing, you know, people pack up crack, where I was seeing people cleaning guns, where many of my friends were court-involved, selling drugs, you know, probably out there shooting people, like that's the environment I was raised in, right? But there were really good people and really good programs that invested in me as a human being and gave me a world to dream about, gave me hope and expectation. And I go into my community center and it really pisses me off that none of that is happening. And I think that that is, you know, it's, it's, I, I really want, I want to understand why we don't have a standard that is shared across all of the city, all of the agencies and all of the groups that are funded to provide a, a semblance of the same type of programming. If I have young people, I'm like, they're coming in there. Why are we not, why don't we have dance? Why don't we have culinary skills that is, is an employable skill, right? We, we should be equipping them with employable skills so that when they leave to go to the real world, and I'm not talking about OSHA class, I'm so sick and tired of people coming and telling me I want to send my kids to OSHA classes because the only thing they can lose construction is insulting. It is freaking insulting. I am sick of that. We have, we can do culinary art. Kids are so talented. We could be doing micro businesses and teaching them the art, you know, of creating their own small businesses. We could be doing art. We could be doing, I mean, there's just, I can sit here for days and go over all of the, the things that our kids could and should be doing that we are already funding these, these groups to do. What level of oversight does A, does DYCD have to ensure that this level of programming is consistent across all boroughs, regardless of your economic status? To ensure that our kids are walking into spaces that are clean, that are appropriately staffed? My kids are food insecure, some of them are housing insecure. Some of these young people are sleeping in the, in the, in the hallways of their public housing developments because they, they don't, they may not be connected, right? They're not, they don't, they probably haven't heard about a respite center. They probably don't want to go to a respite center. I don't know. But the fact that we have so many of these programs that we are busting our butt every year to fight to ensure that you do not get a single dollar cut and that you get an enhancement, and then I still walk into my centers and they look like that is a problem. And that's my mother rant, but I would really love to hear what level of oversight and what changes are going to be made because the kids get to you first and then they end up in, in, in these detention centers. And quite frankly, the fact that so many of them are in there for such serious felony arrests that are usually tied to gun violence while we're putting in all of this money, to me is mind-boggling. So I really need somebody to explain that to me. It is, no, it's a question, it's a serious question.
Deputy Speaker Ayala, um, twofold. One, we have full oversight of our programs, of course, and we have an evaluation too that we go out. Every program area, whether it's Beacon, Cornerstone, Compass, we have programming frameworks that our community-based organizations have to program within, so create those activities. We go out for support, assistance, capacity building. We have quite a few programs that do culinary arts, quite a few programs that do job development, work readiness, life skills. I give young, they give young people the opportunity for leadership, opportunities in leadership development. We placed, you know, and through your support early on, we placed a social worker at Wagner who worked with young people who were the highest risk, that may or not have been naturally walking through that door. I, I, I would request with you to have a, a local meeting so we can talk about some of the, the concerns that you have and what you've been seeing. During that meeting, I also want to be able to let you know exactly what's happening with those programs and those providers. I know you spoke about infrastructure. Some of the centers are in old, dilapidated structures, and we, we are doing our best to work with NITRA and also directly support some of those repairs and, and renovations in some cases that's happening. But that leak that's been happening for twenty years may, we're working to fix those items like that. But I, I, I would love to, again, I, and we can, we can reach out, but I would love to sit down.
I would love to do, I would love to do that. The social worker was there because it was, you know, the, the, the reason for the advocacy for the social workers was because specifically at that, that community center, we had some of the highest number of young people that were court-involved, that were either shooting people or, or look, somebody was looking for them to shoot them. And when I walked in there, there was no programming, there was no adult, there was no structure. And I found it mind-boggling that that did not exist, especially because the group was so good at bringing them in. But then they're sitting there and the cops are telling me, well, they're there, yeah, they're, we, you know, they're, they're strategizing now on who they're going to shoot. And like two weeks later, they come in and they take all of them. The feds took all of them, all of the kids that we met with that day. And I'm like, how is this happening? This is a systemic failure on our part, you know, to provide this level of oversight. And, and I would love to see, like, what that guidance is, right? What the expectation is, because I would love to go to everyone, every single one of my programs and do a checklist and see if they are meeting up to their standard, because I do not believe that that is true. And the problem is not that, the problem, well, that is, that's a huge part of it. But what bothers me the most is that I can leave my community and go to seventy-something street and go into a community center that looks completely different. And you know what? The community, the, the, the executive directors, that, the, the, the top folks that are running these programs are making really good money. I used to make thirty-four thousand dollars running a senior center. I used to have my husband there at night stripping the, and waxing the floors because I wanted my seniors to come in there and to have a beautiful space to come in that said, we welcome you. We want you here. We used to sell patelillos and bacalaitos just to fundraise so that we could buy the materials, so that we could make our own curtains and buy our own tablecloths so that these spaces were decent. We, we went out and recruited folks to do art classes so that then we could install and, you know, present in a, in a way that said to those older adults, hey, this is your house, right? This is welcoming, it's warm, it's clean. We are providing the things that we know that you need. That is not happening. But I would love to, to go out and I would love to look at that, but it would be a huge, you know, disservice if I sat here today knowing what I know and did not say all of this. So I apologize to my colleagues because I know I've taken way too, too, too long. But I have to say what I have to say because as a person of color that represents a community that is on the receiving end of these injustices, it is my responsibility to speak on their behalf, and that is exactly what I'm doing today.
On your tours, because I will definitely, we'll set that up. But I'm going to pass it off to my colleagues, but I just wanted to say, you know, even some of the things that Deputy Speaker just spoke about around, like, well, why are these programs not reaching the young people? Because we not listening to them. And I just want to say, again, we have young people in here who will be testifying. So my hope is that everyone from the administration stays and not just the, the, the long survivor that they usually leave behind because I think that this is a start of how we are really listening to what needs to happen in these programs and listening to the people who are actually affecting or in the programs. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Williams and then Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you and appreciate the leadership of both co-chairs and their experiences. And just to piggyback on one of the last things, I'll go to my first question, which is my last question, but it dovetails well. So overall, how are you measuring the success of the plethora of preventative programs, both DYCD and ACS? I know you mentioned the evaluation tool, but if you can, like, give us, because the devil is in the details. So if you can give us, like, the details, what is the methodology? What does this evaluation tool look like? Can you share the evaluation tool? Because one of the things, me and Councilmember Stevens talk about this all the time, is sometimes it's not the provider, it's the expectation on the provider. And so what are you actually measuring them on and how do you measure whether or not it was a success? Because I think as so eloquently stated by Deputy Speaker Ayala, like, it's clear that these programs are not working to the best of their abilities.
I guess twofold. One, that's not entirely what I heard. I heard that many of the providers are doing quite an excellent job with their programs, providers, and that's what we see across the city. Our providers.
I know, I know, but we also, she also mentioned that, like, the impact at the end is those kids are ending up in jail and arrested and unfortunately committing crimes. And so what is the methodology behind your measure of success of these programs?
Got it. And I, I just want to touch on that because you brought it back, Councilmember Williams. One, again, I don't want to, that anecdote that happened where young people who are of the highest risk were at the community center having discussion, a conversation. And again, when we meet locally, we can have that provider talk about that, that work that they do in that community.
Yeah, no, I want to know what DYCD is doing to measure the success.
We're part of that plan. We're part of that proposal. We've, we created that initiative that is supporting that social worker, those outreach workers and those peer support leaders.
How are you measuring the success of the program as an oversight?
And, all right, I'll get to you then. So the, our evaluation tool is a site visit monitoring tool. So we are, we are assessing those programs against a framework that they're operating within. So whether it's a Beacon, a Cornerstone, a Compass program, any of our programs, we're looking at both the activities that are happening, are they structured? We're looking at the space, we're looking at staffing, we're looking at the work that's being directly done with young adults. And we're, we're, we're using our evaluation tool, we're rating and grading, and then we're providing, if needed, technical support, capacity building. We're also, if, if, if it calls for it, identifying best practices that we then share across the system. And I, I, again, I, because this is not, it's a consistent kind of discussion, I would love for us to sit down and go over our evaluation tool and go over some of those frameworks that are happening with programs within your district.
Okay, and ACS?
So thank you for this question, Councilmember Williams. I mean, I think, I know the way we approach it is we look at the purpose of the program, right? And determine whether the agencies that we've contracted with are meeting that purpose. So let me give you examples. So for the FAT program, it's a PINs prevention program, right? And so the outcome that we look at is how many young people are ultimately placed on PINs petitions at the end of the year. So I mentioned in my testimony that there were eight hundred and twenty-two PINs placements in two thousand two with, when, you know, at the beginning of the FAT program. In two thousand ten, we implemented our evidence-based models, and we've seen the number of PINs placements drop every year since.
How do you know that the placements have dropped because of the PINs? Because from talking to parents in the anecdotes I had, parents have stopped doing PINs because they didn't feel like it was useful. So what evidence or data do you have to support that it's because of the programming?
So it, it's impossible to create a direct nexus between the FAT program and the number of PINs dropping, but, but we know that the number of PINs placements has decreased, right? We look at it every year. We know that there were nine PINs placements this year, and so.
So that's what I'm saying. So if we can't actually prove that it's the program affecting it, because again, I've heard from multiple parents that they have stopped doing PINs because it was useless. So they were like, well, I'm supposed to show this paper, and like, they weren't getting the support sort of things. And so, and it was an arduous process to get the PINs put in place. And so they got the PINs and nothing happened. So I think if we don't have evidence to support that there's a direct correlation, we shouldn't be using that as evidence and having it on testimony. I'm sorry to cut in.
Well, well, one thing that I can say is that we know that we serve over twenty-seven hundred families each year. The majority of, we are PINs prevention, right? So once a PIN is already been issued, you know, we, 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 there's nothing more that we can do after that process, at least from, from my perspective in my programs. We try to prevent PINs. So we know that we see twenty-six hundred families every year. The majority of those families are coming to us for PINs petitions. We have a responsibility to try and divert those families, keep them together and away from PINs. And so we know that there were only nine PINs placements this year. And so to me, that is a measure of success in that when families come to us, they're looking for PINs and ultimately they get our services and then they don't wind up placing. and ultimately they get our services and then they don't wind up placing their young people in foster care and they, they remain intact.
Thank you, cheers me to have a few more minutes. Thank you so much. Um, similar to what I just said with DYCD, I would love to see like the methodology behind and like, thank you to ACS, cause I know you've helped me ascertain some of your other tools. Because I think it's important, like the type of questions you're asking, how you are assessing the data you're collecting to really tease out what's truly effective. Um, so would love to get into the details a little bit more. So how is ACS incentivizing the use of voluntary programs? Specifically the preventative ones, um, like Family Connection, Strategic Family Therapy, FAP, FAPS is kind of voluntary as well. Like how are you incentivizing those programs, especially for our young folks who might be in need?
Yeah, so FAP is a completely voluntary program. We don't force families to engage in our services. We partner with them to determine what the most appropriate service is. We have a suite of evidence-based models that we can refer families to. But reality is some of the families that come to ACS are, um, are concerned with the stigma attached. And so we will make referrals to community-based organizations. For us, the most important thing is that they get the support that they need. Uh, and so we incentivize that by, again, making it voluntary for families. I mentioned our $1,000 stipend for young people in ATD programs.
Wait, I have a clarifying question, just so I understand the inner workings of the agency. The FAPS program provides like the suite of services, like Family Connection, Strategic Family Therapy, et cetera. And if it's determined, a young person then can become a PINs? Like how does, cause it's, I feel like these terms are used interchangeably. So I just wanted to make sure I understood, so I can ask my question properly.
So before a family is able to file a PINs petition, they have to attempt FAP services, right? So they have to try, you know, make diligent effort to engage in our services. And so that's where we, you know, either refer them to one of our contracted providers, the, the ones you mentioned with the evidence-based models.
Are the functional family therapy, family, okay.
Yes, exactly. We have a mentoring program, we have Fair Futures attached to that mentoring program. So it really is about what the family needs, what the young person needs, um, and that's how we, we approach it.
Okay, how is DYCD and ACS working together? Um, I'm sure there are young folks circling between a DYCD program and an ACS program. Um, so how are you all coordinating efforts and working together to best serve our young folks in New York City?
So I, I mean, I can talk about from, from our perspective.
Do y'all know each other, do y'all talk?
We do, we do, Daryl and I go, go way back, yes.
Good, alright, alright, cool.
So, uh, you know, obviously our young people are involved in after-school programs, things like SYEP. Uh, we coordinate regularly with the United Way through the FAT program to discuss families who maybe, uh, you know, we can make a referral to the Atlas program and vice versa. Um, so we're, we're working regularly with DYCD to, to engage our young people in their programs and, and vice versa.
Okay, I'll just ask the rest of these questions, cause I know like the buzzer's gonna go up right now. Oh, okay, okay, I'll wrap it up right now. Um, can you share more on how, and this is, um, specific to DYCD, can you share more on how you've integrated and better coordinated your suite of existing services with now ONS coming into, um, your agency? And then the other question is, why isn't the DYCD Atlas program connected to the court? So in our briefing papers, it says that Atlas is not connected to the court. And so I just wanted to understand why isn't it similar to some of the ACS programs, which are kind of court-related?
Alright, so two-fold, and we mentioned this earlier, um, during the Q and A. But the first thing that we're doing with our ONS portfolio is we are, the first thing we did was introduce them to all of the DYCD programs. So they can get a full explanation and definition of the different programs that are in their neighborhoods. Um, and we call that Phase One. Phase Two was connecting them locally on the ground, having those meet and greets where that Cure Violence team, the CMS groups, can meet the directors of the after-school program, the Beacon, the Cornerstone. Um, and again, with our push, the underlying foundation is that we are working together collaboratively to support young adults, support families, support the community.
And how are you doing that as an agency? Like you're saying you're doing, but how?
No, that, so they.
Like are you holding meetings? Like how is the work, yeah, so share how you're actually doing it?
No, we're, we're literally having.
I didn't, I'm.
So Chair Stevens actually attended some of those Phase Two meetings where, on the ground, we're having meet and greets. So meetings in the community with the, the staff who are out there doing the Cure Violence work, doing the crisis management system work, along with our other providers. So after-school, um, um, RHY, youth shelters, um, Compass, Cornerstone. Everyone getting together and having that discussion, that networking conversation. And our roles, again, and by borough, I, I know we don't have that much time. Our roles is to make sure that those relationships are working and folks are networking and making referrals. Um, I do want to touch on the Atlas, which gets direct referrals.
Atlas began, thank you, Atlas began as a, as a court-based program and we actually expanded to, um, have community-based referrals. But the way that it works is every single person who comes through the arraignment process or who, um, has bail paid and then is, um, it returns to community, uh, they are if eligible, meaning that they are in the right age range for the services, cause the services are very much around, uh, where people are in their life course. So it's really geared towards young people right now, um, 24 and younger. Um, so if they're eligible based on age and if it's not their first arrest, that they are reaching that level of risk where they're returning to court, um, they are contacted through every means possible to let them know that they're eligible and to bring them into services. So it is, it's, it's our way of, you know, our, our CV work is street outreach. Our Atlas work in some ways is court in-reach. So we're at the courts where, uh, CJA is the agency that does all the arrest-to-arraignment processes and they're our primary referral partner. So we're really trying to reach every single person who's coming through the court process and is returning and to let them know there's an entirely voluntary and community-based therapeutic service that's there for them. But it's not tied back to their case. So it doesn't matter where their case ends up, um, it's not a, it's not an ATI, it's entirely community-based, entirely voluntary.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that some of the frustration that I know I feel is a lot of the programs feel duplicative in certain spaces and places. And to, um, sort of couple that with this idea that as much as you're saying best practices are being spread amongst CBOs and specifically, let's just use the CMS system, I don't think they're being spread amongst these different groups. And so I do hope like through ongoing hearings and like work directly with your agencies, you can really make these programs a little bit more efficient and effective because we care about them, I know I care about them. But I think the outcome really just doesn't reflect a lot of the hard work that you're talking about right now and figuring out where that disconnect is, is critical to the lives of our young folks. So thank you for being here.
Councilmember Wrestler, um, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Chair Stevens and Chair Ayala. I just want to echo Councilmember Williams' sentiments and just thank Deputy Speaker Ayala for her remarks and for her leadership, especially heartfelt and, uh, exceptionally compelling. Uh, it's good to see DYCD, ACS teams. Um, thank you, Daryl and Stephanie and all of you for your hard work. I'm mostly concerned about, uh, just the extreme increases we've seen in the juvenile detention populations and everything we're doing to try to prevent it. So could we just begin, what's the current census today between Horizons and Crossroads?
Hi, thank you for that question. Um, today, the census in total is 228. Um, and that's 107 at Horizon and 121 at Crossroads.
So 228, 12 over the traditional capacity of the programs. I, we did note in our committee.
The capacity increase, has been increased with approval from OCFS up to 267.
Right, I will come back to that in a moment. But I did note in our committee's report that the adolescent offender population was significantly um, above capacity at Horizons, I believe, and significantly under capacity at Crossroads. Do I have that right?
I don't, I don't think so. So the population fluctuates each and every day, so I would have to look at what specific day.
This is from December 11th. I mean, according to this, the Crossroads Secure Juvenile Center had nine available secure and specialized secure spaces for youth classified as juvenile offenders and was over capacity by 21 beds for youth classified as adolescent offenders. Uh, the inverse was true at Horizons.
Right, I'd have to double check that, cause I think that's also drafted as though the capacity wasn't 267. Um, I'd have to double check whether or not there's a difference in how many beds were AOs and how many AOs were in the beds. I can say the overwhelming majority of young people at Crossroads and Horizon are AOs.
Yes, they're not all AOs, but they, the majority indeed. I'd like to come back on how we drive down the population in a moment, but first, just on the OCFS piece. Since applying for the waiver, temporary waiver that expires in about two weeks, uh, what steps has ACS taken to reduce the population?
So, just to be clear, ACS does not have a lot of control over the population of young people in detention. They are placed there by the court. Um, when young people are placed there by the court, we are required to provide the best possible safe and supportive environment for them. We have taken some steps, um, within the limited powers we have. We've been lurking closely with the Sheriff's Office so that more young people can be on electronic monitoring and not in detention. Um, we've also been working with OCFS to ensure that young people who are ready to be transferred to OCFS based on their court proceedings, transfer expeditiously. Um, I mean, one of the good things we've seen, um, in all of this with Raise the Age is that there are very few juvenile delinquents, so young people with the lower level crimes coming through secured detention. Um, and so the other piece that we do though is try to limit as much as possible NEJD from touching secured detention.
I, look, I, I generally agree that ACS has too little control over the census in our juvenile detention centers. And that many of our ATI and ATD programs are held by other agencies that don't have the same investment in reducing our census, our census. In fact, the Department of Probation seems to not care at all and they're eliminating programs willy-nilly that would have a dramatic impact on reducing the population in secured detention. How they've eliminated the impact program, how they've eliminated next steps, how they've chart, cut a million dollars off of Arches. I, I think it's disgraceful and it's making your job a thousand times more difficult to manage a census where you have kids sleeping in classrooms where there are, there are allegations or reports of slashing and stabbings in those dormitory settings, of somebody's teeth being knocked out. I don't know if those incidents are true, I'd appreciate if you could confirm and have those incidents been reported to OCFS.
Sure, so I, actually, I really appreciate the opportunity to have a moment to, um, clear some of the.
Criticized Department of Probation slashing of essential programs?
No, to clarify, to clarify some of what's been said about, um, what's happening at Crossroads and Horizon. So first of all, there is no young person sleeping on the floor or the ground, which I know has been reported several times. There are when we don't have a bedroom space. Um, we have temporary beds that are in the classrooms, only in the evening, not during the day. The young people go to school, um, and they have pillows, blankets and all the sheets, you know, all the proper bedding. And so I just want to be very clear that we do not have any young people sleeping on the floor. Um, it is a, when the young people are sleeping in the classrooms, which, um, is very few now, cause actually the population has decreased over the past few weeks, which is a good thing. Um, they are supervised the entire time. We unfortunately do have incidents in detention regardless of whether young people are sleeping, um, in classrooms or in the halls. Um, our data on that, which is available, and also we have, you know, new news monitors for Horizon, has shown that the incidents have been coming down despite the increase in the population. We think that's in large part due to, um, the incredible leadership we've brought into detention and then also sort of this culture of safety and education and it's really starting to make a big difference.
But any incidents in the dormitory cell settings where there's a temporary waiver to allow people to sleep there are, have to be reported to OCFS, correct?
Any incident, yeah.
And, any incident indeed, of course, but, and is there a plan for post-January 5th?
Um, I'm not totally sure what the plan would be, I'd have to check. Um, about whether or not there'd be an additional waiver, I'm not sure, I'd have to check. We do have a longer-term plan to, um, increase capacity at Horizon. Um, and to not only increase capacity, but really increase the programming space, the education space, the health and mental health space. These detention centers were built and created before Raise the Age. Half of the young people who are with us are over 18. Um, and so we really need to, um, make the facilities better, meet the needs of an older population.
Uh, significant investments were made, uh, to renovate and upgrade the facilities at the time of the passage of Raise the Age to accommodate that transition. And frankly, I'm incredibly disappointed that we're talking about investing in an expansion of juvenile detention capacity rather than invest, while we are slashing programs that keep people out, right? That give young people opportunity. I just think it is a absolutely backward set of administration-wide priorities. And I recognize that ACS, in our, the way that we've structured things currently, is basically responsible for managing what happens within those four walls. But, sorry, I'm a popular guy. Um, the, just kidding, man, didn't think that was funny. The, um, but, but in, in all, no, I'm serious, that was a joke, I apologize. The, um, but in all seriousness, uh, it doesn't make any sense. And I, we need to see greater leadership from this administration as it relates to managing and implementing the alternative to incarceration, alternative detention programs for our young people to ensure that every single slot is being filled, that we're averting detention and incarceration at every possible turn. And I don't think that's happening right now.
I can speak a little bit to ACS and so can Ray. So the Alternative to Detention Program, we do manage that, but that's for young people in family court. And the good news is very few young people from family court are in secured detention. 96% of the young people don't have a case in family court. Um, so we are, you know, that's where we want to, to keep young people from ending up in secured detention as a 16, 17-year-old. It's really about serving them and working with them and their families.
We've heard from providers that are serving, that have contracts that, that limit, uh, what providers can do in family court, who are allowed to operate in Supreme Court and vice versa. I mean, has a comprehensive review been conducted of our ATI and ATD contracts post-Rise the Age to make sure that we're effectively serving and our young people as well as possible and reducing entries into incarceration? And why is it make sense to split these programs up across multiple agencies? Why not have the agency that's most invested in reducing the census also be responsible for managing the programs and providing those connections to, to alternatives to incarceration to detention?
I mean, I think that's part of the analysis and thinking that went behind moving the Alternative to Detention programs over to ACS. Um, they had been at Mach J previously, um, so that we now operate sort of that full continuum of services on the family court side, which Ray oversees.
I have a lot more questions, but I think that I'm gonna get in trouble and Chair Stevens is the best. So let me shut up and maybe there'll be a time for a second round.
Thank you, Lincoln, those are a lot of questions. Um, and, and just to piggyback on something you said even about the, the expansion. And I know I've spoken to you guys, but I still feel strongly if they build it, it will, they will come. So investing in, in building more facility just doesn't sit right in my spirit. So I just have to make sure we put that on record. And I know that the reason the increase isn't your fault, but we still, it's just not, it doesn't, it doesn't feel right that that's where the, the route that we're taking. But I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Lee.
Thank you, hi, everyone. Um, so I just, and thank you, co-chairs, for just your experience, passion, everything on this topic, cause I think it's extremely important. Um, and I just had a few questions. The first one was around the respite centers, because I know that that was also part of the, uh, mental health roadmap that we had created, um, with the city council. And there, at least on, I know that there's only about 50 beds across the entire city and I just was curious to know if there were some that were separated out or different ones that were separated out specifically for youth? Um, and, and if there's enough and what the waitlist looks like and how that's being addressed.
So I just want to clarify, because we do, we're contemplating two different respite programs. The respite program that I manage is for young people who are at risk of juvenile justice intervention. And then we have a program on the child welfare side that's coming along um, that is geared toward young people on the child welfare side. So I'm not sure which program you're referring to.
Or is it a third program?
No, I mean, yeah, no, I just know that in terms of the respite centers that we have across the city, there's just very few and far between. And so I would just wanted to know, um, for your programs, um, you know, how many beds and also how many, um, if, what the waitlist looks like and what that, yeah.
So, so we actually don't operate respite centers. They're very, you know, respite homes. We have five respite homes on the juvenile justice side. Again, a very small program, one per borough. There are no young people in the program right now. It's a twenty-one-day program, and we serve fourteen people in twenty- fourteen young people in 2022. On the child welfare side, there-
It will be ten beds, but it hasn't opened yet.
Okay.
And it'll be the same thing. It won't be a center. It'll be people's homes.
Okay. And as a former nonprofit executive as well, that dealt with many of the contracts from several different agencies, I know that one of my frustrations was always that everything seemed very siloed. So, it is good to Councilmember Williams' earlier point that you guys are working together. So, is there a monthly task force meeting, or do you guys have regular meetings where you're sort of coordinating efforts with each other?
The answer is yes, but we're trying to figure out who's going to provide or do you do.
So, the answer is yes. We work closely together. One of the meetings that we do have quarterly is to discuss the, our youth programs that are in this non-secure and secure locations. So, we talk about the activities. We talk about the outcomes, the performance, whether changes should be made, any recommendations, but we do that as a quarterly meeting. But we, we speak with ACS quite often.
And also, DYCD participates. Sorry, thank you. DYCD participates on the new Juvenile Justice Advisory Board that we've convened. We've only had one meeting so far, but it does meet quarterly, and DYCD and both ACS are major pieces to that.
Here's one more.
And, and they are, we also meet with them monthly to discuss our after-school programming in District Seventy-Nine, which CCAA participates, so we do talk regularly.
Okay. And for, you know, if I'm a parent, I'm feeling very overwhelmed with everything, and I know that you said that they're located and your services are near the courthouses, but are there other places where you're able to reach out to families in case, you know, for preventative services before they get to that point? You know, are there ways that they can find out about these programs, especially the ones that maybe are not directly, you know, if they haven't reached the court system yet, but if there's preventative programs, if they can-
Yeah, sure. So, we actually have a small team of community engagement specialists that goes out into the community nights and weekends, attends resource fairs to market the family assessment program and just let folks know that it exists. We have done some social media marketing in the past. We have a pretty robust website that has, you know, stories from families who have engaged in our services. They can always reach out to us through our website, you know, they can call our offices. They don't have to walk into our offices. So, you don't have to be involved in family court, child welfare, or juvenile justice to receive FAP services. Any family can contact us. We can do the assessment virtually.
Okay.
So, we've, you know, sort of been a little more nimble since the pandemic, in that we are now doing, you know, assessments virtually, and we're able to connect with families that way, so they don't have to come through the family court, you know, metal detectors to get to us.
Okay.
And for DYCD, we actually have an interactive website called Discover DYCD, where families can put in zip code, borough, address, and learn about the programs within their neighborhood.
Okay. And just, oh, sorry, just two more quick questions. So, the, I know that you had mentioned you do very tailored referrals, and, you know, I think we know that based on evidence and all of that, the research, that if it's tailored to the needs of the individuals, there's a lot more success and less recidivism. But just wanted to know what your definition of tailored referrals look like, and how does that happen, and what do you mean by that? Because as the deputy speaker ma- mayor, deputy speaker mentioned, deputy speaker mentioned, you know, I think there are a lot of perhaps areas and skillsets and programs that youth have a lot of talent in that maybe, you know, of course, due to constraints are not available, but just as, if you could go through that process, that'd be great.
Yeah. So, when a family walks into one of our family assessment programs, they are greeted by a licensed social worker who is trained in engagement, and, and it isn't us sort of dictating to a family what their needs are. It's a partnership where we sit down with them, try and identify what the underlying issues are, and then make a referral specific to whatever that issue is, right? So, for some young people, you know, their family comes to us, and the parent may say, "Look, my young person is the one with the issue. I don't want to undergo an intensive evidence-based model." And so, for that family, we may just say, "All right, well, maybe we can attach mentoring support or our mentoring program to your young person." And so, it really is about the needs of each individual family, and we tailor whatever support they require specific to them. So, even if we don't offer a contracted service that would address the need, we look to the community agencies like DYCD to figure out what the most appropriate service is and refer the family that way.
Okay. And just my last question real quick is, you know, in, in talking about prevention and all these preventive services, I guess my question is, what is, what is your relationship with DOE? Because a lot of the students are spending all day in school, and what is the connection there and the relationship there to all these programs? Because that, to me, is a good place to start, because if, for example, you're noticing that something is off and someone's acting out, and there's a couple incidences, maybe something's happening at home, or there's, you know, a death in the family that really impacted the student or something, right? So, whatever the trigger may be, how does, how does that sort of flow chart happen, if you will?
Sure. So, so the DOE is actually our largest referral source for the family assessment program. About a third of the families that come through our door are referred to us by the Department of Education. Our borough director, so each of our offices is staffed with a borough director. They are intentional about making a connection to the middle schools and high schools in their borough, and we specifically look at zip codes where young people are struggling the most with behaviors, right? And so, we target schools in those areas to send our community engagement teams out into the, to the DOE offices in order to engage with, you know, the social workers there, the parent advocates, to ultimately make sure they know about our services, handing out brochures. We have brochures in over twenty different languages, and so, we try and make our presence felt through the Department of Education.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple more questions, and, and just to go back to the family enrichment centers, which I'm really excited about, and I know you said you're getting thirty more, and just my question, because one of the things I often find is, like, in certain areas, there's a saturation of programs, and then, like, you go on parts of my district where there's nothing going on. And so, just thinking about, how are you guys going to be placing these, and thinking about, is there, like, some interactive map that can show, like, where we have a lot of programs and concentrations? Because I know that was something that I've been, like, working on and with Councilmember Russell of, like, literally mapping out these programs, and like, you can see, like, hotspots where there's, like, all the programs. We got, like, CMSS, we got communities, we got all the things, and then other places where there's nothing. So, how are you going to be thinking about that in placement?
Sure. So, actually, I appreciate the question about the family enrichment centers. I was thinking about-
I'm coming to visit, too, so I'm really excited. I want to-
Yeah, we would love to have you. I was thinking about the FECs while Deputy Speaker Ayala was talking about what she would want a community center to look like. I think a lot of the FECs hopefully are that. They're developed by the community members themselves. We had three demonstrations, and then we've done three rounds of RFPs, so we now have twelve open. There will eventually be thirty. The next nine in the next year should be open, then another nine after, ten after that. However you get to thirty, my math may have just been wrong, but-
All right, nobody's counting.
There are twelve open, and they are in the tree neighborhoods that, at the time of when we decided to expand from three to thirty, those were the neighborhoods hit hardest by COVID and poverty, and so, those were how those were selected. And I could put a plug for my former organization, Citizens Committee for Children, where I come from, who has probably the best mapping of where all programs and services are located in this city.
And so, you worked with them as well, as far as, like, locations? Because even when I think about, like, when we look at, like, where there's concentration of poverty and where COVID hit, all those things are the same, right?
Yes, correct.
And, like, even when I think about districts like mine, the whole district is that, but literally, all the programming is concentrated in specific areas in those neighborhoods. And so, I just, I, I just feel like it's incumbent upon me to make sure that I'm pushing to make sure we're looking in other spaces that are not getting any resources, and not just for ACS, but like DYCD as well. Like, I have, like, my Highbridge area, we're getting a community center, thanks to the advocacy of us two members back in the day. We fought really hard for that community center, and so, you know, they don't have a lot of resources there, but, you know, and it's one of those things that's constantly overlooked. DYCD, I have a couple of questions regarding the November PEG. The Office of Neighborhood Safety inquired a $5.5 million PEG in FY25, and, and the out years. Please provide a breakdown of which ONS programs or services will be cut as a result of the PEG, and what are the tangible effects of the cuts for the youth justice program providers and young people enrolled in those ONS programs? Because Jac told me the other day that it was just savings, and those were supplemental programs, so I would love to hear what those supplements are.
So, Chair, I'll start with, so one, none of, none of the November PEGs affect direct services provided through our ONS CMS providers.
I'm sorry, PEGs in FY25, sorry.
Yeah, and, and those were actualized in November. None of that affects our direct ONS CMS providers. The reduction includes projected accruals, some events, legal services, and some capacity building. We believe that the capacity building part will make up for it with the DYCD capacity building and technical assistance being provided, but we can get back to you with a more extensive overlay of the PEGs.
Yes, I would really love to just kind of see what that breakdown is, because it was just like, "Oh, it's just savings. It'll be fine. Don't worry about it." And so, just to move on to RHY, homeless and runaway youth, a topic that I think is important for us to bring into this conversation. Does DYCD fund RHY programs that have specific services for justice that involve youth? And if not, what barriers does DYCD face in providing those services?
So, I believe that all of our RHY programs work with all young people. Many of them may, I mean, some of them may be justice-involved. Sometimes it's hard to know in the very beginning whether they are, but they're working with all young people on referrals, on what the young people need to both develop and then move on and sustain and, and, and grow, if you will.
So, the answer is no. You don't have specific programs for justice that involve youth in RHY community. You work with everyone, is your answer. So, it's not specific. I'm just, I'm just-
I can, I can, I can double-check and get back to you, but-
Okay. I could also add, and maybe Yohan could add, like, we wouldn't discharge a young person from close to home to homelessness.
Yeah, I mean, and that's not the question, right? Like, a lot of these young people do go home, and then they run away, and they end up in these programs, and I'm asking, do we have specific programs for young people who've, like, had those issues that are probably, I'm for sure, ending up in these drop-in centers and our, and our, and our shelters and all the things, and so, just trying to see if there's specific programs for them. Does DYCD track whether RHY has some involvement with juvenile justice? Because I know you just said that sometimes you'll find out as it goes on, but is that, like, part of the intake process to try to, like, track that information?
Yeah, in some cases, we know that, so in our discharge sort of report, we know whether or not someone was discharged because they actually were detained in some capacity. Last year, 2022, we had eight of those cases, six in our crisis shelters, and two in our TILs.
And I guess this question would probably be more for ACS, but thinking about when young people are discharged, and I know that there's usually aftercare plan, are we also coordinating with DYCD with some of the programs that they have locally in their community for them to be able to be connected back to the community and being integrated in that way?
Yeah, we always, in close to home, and especially for the aftercare piece, we always try to connect our youth to whatever their needs are, and we, the good thing about kids in close to home is that they, we are able to connect them to community-based organizations. They don't necessarily have to be attached to ACS, but there are services that DYCD does provide, like credible messaging, that we would connect the kids to.
Just, and Chair, just to add to that, in the locations, the secure and non-secure locations that we have the Center for Community Alternatives working in, they also operate a next-gen program that provides reentry mentors who connect to these young people, again, connect them to resources. There's about eleven, eleven or twelve providers that also provide that service to ensure that when that young person does come home, that they have connections and attachments to other positive things to support them.
Absolutely. Well, Lincoln ain't here, so I guess he gonna miss the second round. Aren't you guys lucky? So, I'm linking once, linking twice. All right, well, he's done. All right, so, that actually wraps up the questions I have. Are you, do you have any more questions, Stephanie, or? All right, so we are done with that. Oh, look at that. He must have hurt. He must have hurt me.
She tried.
I did. And you have five minutes.
We'll see. Linda doesn't believe me.
You have three minutes.
All right, I'm hustling. Okay. Could I, I imagine, firstly, let me just say, thank you again to Chair Stevens for your leadership on this, and it's great to see so many folks from the community out for this just incredibly, incredibly important hearing. Stephanie, can you speak to the, to the, to the Impact Program and how consequential it is for, as a potential source of diversion for ACS entrance into juvenile detention? Is this on your radar? Are you concerned?
I'd need to look into the Impact Program. I don't have much information about it.
My understanding is that it was previously held by Esperanza. It was designated to cases. There was a RFP process that had been completed, and then probation pulled back and eliminated, and among the other programs that it's chosen to wrongly eliminate. And it's just, you know, a critical diversion program, and, you know, the mayor talks about upstream, upstream thinking as if it's a, you know, the right way to think about things, and we're cutting the diversion programs and expanding jail capacity. It's like the true opposite of, of that mentality or approach.
The colleagues from probation are going to need to answer the questions.
I know, but-
You wasted your three minutes on a question that you answered.
I just, I'm so frustrated with them. I want to say it at every turn. Okay. Could you speak to the vacancies and case management positions at Horizons and Crossroads at this time?
I don't have numbers, and I'm not sure if you specifically mean the case managers or the youth development specialists?
I was specific-
Actually, the case managers. Okay. Usually, people ask me about youth development specialists. I'd need to get the data on how many vacancies. It's obviously a really important role, working with the young people and their families. None of, we're, the work that they do has not been negatively impacted. They're still working with the families, arranging for visits, and working with the young people on site.
I, what's been reported to us is that there's supposed to be one case manager per hall. There's less than half of that in place now. It's critically important that we get those roles, positions filled, so if you could follow up with the committee, that would be very helpful. And another question is, how many staff does ACS have that are focused on reentry work at Horizons and Crossroads?
So, we don't have specific reentry staff from Horizon and Crossroads. Unfortunately, most of the young people from Horizon and Crossroads are not going back to the community from Horizon and Crossroads. The small number of JDs who are in and out quickly, the, they're, they have a case in court, and the court's connecting them to whatever court-ordered services, and ACS has very limited involvement with them. But for young people who are with us for a substantial amount of time and are going back to the community after leaving Crossroads and Horizon, which again, is small, the, the way it works is that the Department of Education, which is on-site providing school at Horizon and Crossroads, they are working to connect the young people back to school, and they work with the young people for six months after transitioning back. And then Bellevue, which provides the on-site mental health services, if needed, would connect the young person to those types of services in the community. And then, there's the program that DYCD spoke about with CCA, where mentors help connect the young people when they return back, and they're credible messengers and work with them. And then, the sort of last piece is the case managers who have been working with the family, and so, if we know there's something that the family needs, that we can help connect them to services, whether it's FAP or some other type of service in the community.
I appreciate that not everyone who's at Horizons and Cross- I appreciate that not everyone who's at Horizons and Crossroads is immediately going back to the community. But it's always been said to me, reentry begins on day one. And not having a more robust, dedicated team that's focused on that work seems like, uh, a misaligned approach. Um, I, I do just wanna come back.
You wanna wrap up, please? Thanks.
I'm wrapping up on something and you, you may again tell me enough and the Chair will kick me that I'm still fixated on the Department of Probation. But programs like Arches, AIM, Advocate, Intervene Mentor, we've been advised are not at capacity, that there are slots available. Is A C S tracking capacity in these programs? Are you all trying to make sure that young people that are at risk of potentially entering into your facilities are maximally benefiting from the, like, high-quality young adult, uh, uh, development programs that we have available?
So we track our own program, like our own alternative detention program. We wouldn't track vacancies in the other program or not in court on those.
So I get that. And I just think it comes back to the fact that we have these programs wrongly dispersed across multiple agencies. And some of these agencies are not clearly invested at all in reducing the incarceration rate or number uh, that we're dealing with in New York City today. And so I really think it's time for us to revisit this and start to consolidate these programs. I think A C S would be a more logical home for a number of these initiatives. I don't think you all would have ever cut these very good programs, uh, like, uh, the Department of Probation has. So I hope that we can revisit this together and I wanna thank the Chair for the additional time.
As you know, we're always happy to talk to you.
You're probably the only one.
Daryl's happy to talk to me too.
No, he not. Uh, but thank you, Councilmember, I'm Russler. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to committee staff, um, to get, roll into the testimony. And again, I hope that you guys can stay around to listen to some of the young people's testimony. I would have had them testify in the beginning, but a lot of them decided to do it last night. So I would love for you to make sure you guys stay around to hear some of their testimony. Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. Our first panel will be Makita Ryfield, Ali Sebaway, Juan Rodriguez Flores, and Sukanya Meeks.
I'd like to also say, I didn't prep them or anything. They did this all on their own, so I'm very excited.
Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Juan Rodriguez Flores. I am from District 16. And I am in favor of preventative services for at-risk youth. Uh, thank you for the time you guys are giving me to speak. I was born and raised in the South Bronx to immigrant parents from Mexico, all while growing up in one of the most impoverished congressional districts in the United States. As a current student in the public school system in the Bronx, I witnessed firsthand the detrimental effects of budget cuts and a lack of funding for low-income students or schools. The general lack of funding for education in public schools is, i- i- it leads to bigger classrooms, fewer advanced classes, and cuts on essential after-school programs. Less funding means less support for many low-income students who need extra support to graduate from high school and attend higher education. Combine all of these factors, we come out with very few opportunities for our youth to find other ways to succeed. The existence of youth programs allows students whose schools can provide for them to have options to learn what they are interested in. Art, tech, business, trades, college readiness, and anything else you could think of is taught in these programs. And by getting rid of them, you get rid of the last hopes of our youth trying to make something out of what practically already is nothing. In my experience, coming across life-changing opportunities are rare. When I was in middle school, the, I, I did the most I could with what my school could provide, which was simply maintaining good grades. However, I craved to learn more and I wanted to try new experiences. I came across S E O Scholars, an amazing college and career readiness program by a fortune of luck. At Tech Talk, my sister showed me is what introduced me. Thus, I walked the path I do today. It led me to a journey to live in Washington, D.C. and live out and learn about my passion for politics and public service. I even got to speak with a Supreme Court Justice all because S E O, a youth program, had helped me with my application and funded my entire trip. The start of my life was sparked because of youth programs. Now imagine if she had never come across that TikTok video. I would have never known of S E O. I would have missed the, the only opportunity I could apply. And I, everything I've done till now would have just been a dream. By getting rid of such valuable youth programs similar to the mine, this will be someone else's experience. Our youth will miss out on life-changing experiences because there will, there will be fewer places to learn. By coming across a youth program such as S Y E P, their enti- their entire life and career could be, can begin. It could lead them to meet people they would have never thought of meeting and get a job they could have never thought of achieving. There cannot be any more less or any more funding not going to education or youth programs as we already live in a society that values money over future doctors, lawyers, and leaders. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Makita Bayfield. I'm a proud New York City native and resident of District 16 in the Bronx. I've lived and attended school in ten different neighborhoods throughout four of the New York City boroughs. While I didn't grow up in stable housing, I could depend on different social services targeted towards youth to be my constant. I look back on my childhood and smile as I recall afternoons spent in New York public libraries and community centers. I am grateful for the chance to do things like summer youth. Being in these spaces allowed me the opportunity to see that there is more to life than the poverty and hardship that I was experiencing at the time. Growing up homeless and under constant surveillance by the Administration for Children's Services should have made me at risk. My family has gone through A C S preventative services such as family therapy and found that they treated my parents, my siblings, and myself as if we were criminals. We were simply people in need of assistance and the agency did not treat us that way. However, thanks to some of the community-based services that are now facing budget cuts, I was able to thrive. I'm now a social work and psychology student at Fordham University. I have permanent housing now. I appreciate everyone who took a chance on me and saw my true potential. And now I'm giving back to underserved folks. I volunteer and dedicate my time to serving at-risk youth throughout New York City. For example, I am a court advocate for the Justice Ambassador's Youth Council, where I work with youths ages eighteen to twenty-five who have open criminal court cases. I've made countless referrals to services similar to the ones I received growing up because I want them to have the same opportunities I did. This includes things like housing, employment, family services, mental health treatment, and more. To be clear, we cannot incarcerate our way out of social problems like homelessness, lack of quality education, poor healthcare, and community violence. It is all of our responsibilities to find approaches rooted in care and support, not just punishment. I wish such a model existed when my parents were being investigated by A C S. I wish the young people I served were given more alternatives to incarceration that acknowledge their potential for growth. In both these instances, my parents and clients were punished for mistakes they made without alternative options offered to facilitate rehabilitation. I say all this to say that I am in support of offering services and alternatives to carceral means of surveillance on vulnerable children and families. Thank you for your time.
Um, hello, uh, my name is Ali. I come from Wyman, which stands for Young Men, Institution, and Native. I'm from District 16, and I came here to talk to you guys about what Wyman has done for me, a nonprofit organization. Oh, and I'm also fighting for, um, preventative services, try, for, um, at-risk youth and justice-involved youth. So before I joined Wyman, like, I was just wandering around. I didn't know what I wanted to do with my life. I was getting into trouble at school, um, fights all the time. I went to alternate school. And I was over there doing school with kids who brought guns to school. So that wasn't really a good thing. And, um, one day, my friend invited me to go over to this hangout spot that he knew. He didn't wanna tell me what it was. I don't know why, but he told me to come. And it turned out to be a nonprofit organization called Wyman. Um, at Wyman, they taught me the meaning of living a full and meaningful life. Like, hanging out with other people my age, it gave me new experiences in life. And handing out food to the needy, it gave me a new perspective on life. Like, to see the great community come together as one, like, that really changed me. And now I work as a teen advisor for Wyman. And it frustrates me to see how top-down it is. I know you guys were elected to your positions because you care, but because you care, you're here all the time. And you're not here to see the finer details. You're not here to see, like, how kids go down to Times Square just to cause trouble because they have no advisor at home. You're not there to see how kids can cry at our services because they don't have nobody to look up to. So I'm asking you to not cut the funding and to look at the finer details. I'm asking you guys to, um, just give more consideration to the people down below. The leader of the, um, nonprofit organizations, they do a lot, but they can only do so much. All right, that's it. Thank you.
We're not supposed to applaud, so if you, you can silent applause is, is, is more appropriate. Thank you. I'm excited too. They doing great.
Hello, I'm Sukanya Meeks, a member of the Youth Justice Network here, um, in Harlem. And I'm a resident of Jamaica, Queens. I wanted to come down here today really just to, like, talk off the head. I didn't really prepare anything. But my concerns is, like, always there, so. Um, my concern basically is for the cut of the nonprofit programs that, um, is being cut off. Uh, non, Youth Justice Network, they saved me from being incarcerated on recorders. So I just wanna just, like, push my story out there to let you guys understand, like, these nonprofits, they actually care about us. And they're not doing it for social media attention and they're not doing it for clout or anything like that. They're doing it because they genuinely care about our generation as, I'm twenty years old and I see kids younger than me going through things that they shouldn't have to go through. For example, Covenant House right now, that's located on Forty-first West and, um, in Times Square. The amount of homeless kids are just like kids that's just like parentless or just don't have no guide in the world, like, they need help and our youth is really failing. Like, there's no positive leaders out there. There's nobody that's really getting out there in the streets and letting these kids know, like, it's something wrong and there's something going on. And we grew up, especially in low-income communities, we grew up not knowing how to deal with mental emotions and grew up dealing with, like, super, like, problems that just, like, could, like, really, like, affect us, like, when we get older. So I really just wanna draw attention and ask for more community support and more support from the councilmen within our low-income communities, just to get out there in the streets and see what we have to go through every day. And see that there's kids that have to, there's kids younger than me that have to provide for their younger siblings. And they can't positively do that and expect to go to school and manage just all of this. So we do need the help and we do need the, um, funding for these stuffs. I also wanted to talk about the seriousness of alternating. Instead of sending these youths to jail environments and these survival environments and expecting them to come home and be able to just jump back into nature and jump back into going to school and going to class, like, to understand the pressure that they are being put down in Horizon. There's kids being cut every day. There's kids being affected by gang violence. Even if they're not a gang member, they're still being affected by these stuffs. And I feel as if bringing community centers into these communities and letting these kids understand, like, we hear y'all's story. We see what you guys are going through, like, we really understand and not just saying we understand for media attention or for the news attention, really hearing these kids' story and, like, just really just getting a real understanding. And I feel like our youth will be so much better. We just need to be heard, like. That's one thing I had a problem with growing up. I was never being heard because they felt like kids, we didn't know really that much. But when we're really going through it, like, we have to fight day-to-day life skills and our parents is at work twenty-four seven, like, my, what brought me outside and into the streets was, I didn't have a mom and my dad at home. My dad was incarcerated for my whole entire life. My mother, she was always working, so she never had time to really sit down and figure out what was really going on with us. So stuff like that, I feel like if our youth just had somebody just to listen out to them. And also, these people that's dedicating their time, they also have families too. So these nonprofit organizations, they have families that they have to feed as well. So you guys cutting our fundings from those and cutting down middle schools and pushing them into high schools and stuff like that, it's really, it's really putting a big toll on us. I just wanna let you guys hear, like, we really do need help out here. Like, not only low-income communities, we need help just spreading the word for this generation and next generation, even a generation after that.
I just want, where you going? Well, one, thank you guys for, for showing up. I, I just wanna say, I think it's extremely important that, you know, you guys are part of this process. And you're preachers of the choir. We hear you. We are all on the same team and we're all saying the same things. Um, and I'm just so proud of each and one of you guys just stepping out and saying, like, hey, we wanna be heard. And so we're here to listen. But just, and just, I just wanted to, to clarify and, and to Ali, cause I know you had specific things you feel like are lacking in programs, cause I know you talked that you feel like it's very heavy top. So you feel like a lot of things are just coming down. What are some of the programs or ideas that you had around what we should be really investing in?
Um, I would say, like, after-school programs for the kids where we all come together. Like, it could be simple stuff, like playing games together, but you get to know them. You get to know kids around, like, your block. I, I went to school with some of these kids and I never spoke to them. Then after that, they're my friends. I look, I see them in school. I say what's up to them. And it's like, I get a new brother.
So basically, you're looking that we should be fostering more programs that is fostering community?
Yeah.
And if anyone else wanted to add?
I wanted to add on to, um, building more programs to alternate, instead of sending them to, like, Horizons and Crossroads. Build programs that allow kids to do at least, like, a week or two. And like this program where they can, like, learn new building skills and life skills and stuff like that. I feel like if we take a child out of a stormented, like, mindset and put them in a mindset where they're doing resume building or even computer coding or things that you don't usually do in the hood, like, you feel me, give them, like, a different side of life, I feel like that would really, like, help out.
Additionally, um, I think having resources for kids who are, maybe school isn't the best thing or academics aren't the best thing for them and more of like a creative artsy type of, you know, community, right? It's already hard enough for normal, you know, just people who are into arts to, you know, be successful, right? And because we're the Bronx, the Boogie Down Bronx, right? Birth of hip-hop, there's so much people to look up to in our community who want to pursue music, art, anything fashion, right? And so by not having those resources for kids to use, they're not able to achieve that potential that they want or that, the career that they want. And so allowing kids to have youth programs that, you know, encourage that will, you know, it's just another way of, you know, people of color and just those who are less privileged to, you know, make it out, to be successful.
I agree with everything that my peer said. Another hyper-specific example to my community would be the fact that we don't have a library. The Morris Library has been being built for years now and I'm still not sure what the update is on when it will be opened. As I said, I've lived in ten communities throughout four of the New York City boroughs. When home was shaky, I was able to go to the library, yes, to read, yes, to use the computer to do my homework, but also to find a sense of community. My dad used to volunteer and teach karate classes at the Laurelton Library. I used to go to the Williamsburg Library and do arts and crafts classes once a month. Things like that can be so beneficial. I think libraries are great organizing centers. They can give out so much information in addition to just literacy and reading. There's also, um, info, immigration information that can be given out. I know the Mott Haven Library is really great at that. And so that's something that I would like to see in my community in District 16 more.
Thank you. And, and just to, to piggyback, I know Deputy Speaker Ayala literally is the things that you were saying. So you just kind of like echoed how she doesn't feel like there's enough diverse programming for young people in the community. And so it's just really good to hear that that's not her just saying it, it's coming from your mouth. So making sure that, that, that is being pointed out. So thank you. I don't have any more questions. Do you have a question? Oh, Lincoln has, of course, Lincoln has a question.
I just wanna say, each of you spoke so beautifully and, and persuasively. And I really appreciate your thoughtful advocacy. It matters. And, um, really, if there's anything that each of us can do to be helpful to each of you, let us know. But we're gonna keep fighting for each of the things that you're laying out because it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to this panel. Our next panel will be Lauren Galloway, Shanaya Ingram, Christopher Maspons, Julia Davis, and Caitlin Passeretti. Julia Davis, and Kaitlyn Passeretti.
I'm doing good. I'm Chris. Oh, yeah, I got it in my phone.
You can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, hi, I'm Shanaya Ingram. I live in the Bronx, New York, in Morehouses. And I'm not here to like, you know, put it like put the the, I'm representing for the um the nonprofit organizations, but I'm not here to put it down. I'm here to talk about all the good things that they did. Like I've I've been in like an SOS and BHCJC since I was about like fourteen years old. And like uh like throughout the years I've been in internships like placekeeping, um I've did digital media, like, you know, like different things. I've got my OSHA forty, my flagger certificate. I've received my security license and stuff like that and like, you know, like it's like a second home to me and and like in the centers and stuff like, you know, they keep on expanding and like we like that because it's like you know, in the low income, like, you know, everybody thinks the the lowest, you know, everybody in low incomes were like, you know, become and then like people visit us and they like you know, they they get in, they get, you know, they get excited and stuff. We had a carnival on our on our block like yeah, I'm like who like who like who has carnivals like, you know, like everybody was so happy, like everything was free, everybody enjoyed themselves. We did it a second year like, you know, like it's just stuff like that. People really look forward to like, you know, you don't know, like how she said, like you don't know what people go through in their homes and stuff. So like to have a place like a community center or something that they can actually come to and feel comfort, like, you know, they can have a counselor and stuff like that and people are like, you know, like I feel like we need that, like, you know, there's people that might go to that, go there, like go to one of the programs and then they go home and they get an abuse or they go home and they gotta worry about what they have to eat and stuff like, you know, you don't know, so like it's just it's just I consider it as like a safe haven, you know, for people that really like really need it, like, you know, people may not, people don't have programs and they just run around and then, you know, they in the system and then they and then they're treated wrong wrongly in the system as well and then, you know, so they come home and then it's like it's just a dominant, like it's just a domino effect to everybody and it's like everything could be stopped like I think there's a lot of improve, a lot of room for improvement and you know, I don't think there's an, I don't think there's enough when it comes to nonprofit.
My name is Christopher Maspons. Um, good afternoon, everyone attending this hearing. I'm a nineteen-year-old Latino kid uh representing SOS and the Bronx Community Justice Center. We are here gathering together to speak in charge to stop the gun violence in the Bronx. A lot of people might look at it as a big crisis, but if I say more than you, more than to it than you can imagine. There are so many kids ages twelve to twenty-four who need real guidance and not to be thrown in a cage like animal and being humiliated. I feel that people don't know the type of trauma kids have been through. You don't know whether a kid had to sleep all night, sleep on the on the street at that night and the next day in the staircase because it's too cold outside because he don't got no family to go home to. Things like that can really make a kid feel lost and wanted alone and scared. They feel like nobody cares for them. It's little stuff like that that can really make or break a person and some people are left broken and left to fend for themselves in the streets. People are so quick to judge the youth instead of trying to help and understand the trauma youth faces. Granted, it is more than life than just picking up a gun and using it. But when you wake up every morning and whether you have an issue, whether you have issues in the streets or personal issues going on with yourself, growing up in the hood is dangerous. You will never know where you can um, what can go on when you wake up and decide to leave your house then. That night or that day or whatever and you get faced with people having a shootout because someone probably says something disrespectful, but now someone lose their life. These are all trauma experiences that impact anyone in the long run. Some youth um then feel the need to carry a gun to protect themselves. People might look at it like it's just a act of violence, no, it's just an act of PTSD and trauma experiences that the youth has experienced. Thank you today for allowing me to be here.
Afternoon, y'all. Lauren Galloway, they, she. I'm the advocacy coordinator at the Coalition for Homeless Youth. CHY Coalition for Homeless Youth has been advocating for the needs of runaway and homeless youth for forty-five years. I want to thank um Deputy Speaker Ayala as well as Chair Stevens and the rest of the members of the Committee on General Welfare and Youth Services for holding today's oversight hearing on their preventative services for at-risk justice involve youth as well as councils ongoing support for youth experiencing homelessness in NYC. I'm going to submit longer testimony because you know, I want to get into it, but uh, one thing I want to bring up is young people runaway and or becoming homeless for many complex reasons. As we know, the young people living on the streets or those that don't have a stable, safe housing are highly vulnerable and therefore at risk or have touched the criminal legal system higher than their house peers. The disproportionately effects of those also are linked to over criminalization of black and brown young people and those identifying as LGBTQIA+. In New York City fiscal year twenty twenty-three, three thousand one hundred and eighty-two RHY were served in DYCD residential RHY programs, including three hundred and twenty-six minors. Thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five RHY residents receive non-residential services of the drop-in centers and street outreach programs. That's close to sixty percent of the RHY and DYCD programs identify as black, whereas twenty-nine percent of all NYC youth identify as black. So out of those numbers, you're seeing more of those folks in the residential programs of RHY. So at the core, RHY programs are acting as both preventative services for young people at risk of juvenile justice involvement and supportive services for those already have been involved and yet they're not providing any additional funding or any means of recognition for the work they're doing. So CHY wants to echo some recommendations, but we also want to recommend the recommendations provided by our allies at Legal Aid Society as well as Children's Defense Fund. And so a few things I recommend and I'll get into this more in my written testimony. One, make youth categorically eligible for city fubs vouchers. Two, restore funding for peer navigators in the DYCD RHY system. Three, increase DYCD RHY beds for young people ages twenty-one to twenty-four. Create mental health-focused RHY transitional independent living programs that is so needed. We need to make sure folks are receiving the services for mental health and in the housing that they deserve. Write size runaway and homeless youth service provider contracts. And alas, address the needs of migrant youth and young adults. Thank you and please let me know if you have any questions and I look forward to our continued partnership.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Kaitlyn Passeretti. I'm a policy associate at the Citizens Committee for Children of New York. Thank you Chair Stevens and Deputy Speaker Ayala and committee members for hosting this vital hearing on preventative services for at-risk and justice-involved youth. In order to foster youth development and success, it's imperative that we ensure our city has well-equipped and supported youth service programs. The surge in youth entering New York City detention centers nearly doubling in recent years stems from unnecessary arrests and slashed services that are aimed to prevent arrests or divert divert young people post-arrest. This overcrowding leads to longer detention stays where right now we are reaching about eighty-five days for unsentenced youth. The increase in arrests is directly linked to Mayor Adams and NYPD's quality-of-life violations introduced in March twenty-twenty-two, leading to more severe criminalization of acts like turnstile jumping or loitering. This results in court summons and arrest warrants if missed. This has notably increased the number of youth summoned to court solely for quality-of-life violations, which is a new era of broken windows policing. The racial disproportionality in arrests mirrors past overpolicing trends with ninety percent of NYPD stops from two thousand three to two thousand two involving people of color. Mayor Adams administration and NYPD recorded over fifteen thousand stops in two thousand two, contributing to the overcrowding we're now seeing in detention centers. The November budget modification cuts in essential services like the Compass After School Program threatens to lose over three thousand five hundred after schools, after school seats. And also the summarizing funding reduction will result in program length reduction for middle schoolers and thus impacting academic, social, and emotional growth of of young people, especially in a post-pandemic era. Probation program cuts to programs such as Arches and Next Steps, which offer critical mentorship and support, are jeopardizing crucial services for justice-involved youth, limiting therapeutic support, alternatives to detention, and resources for families impacted by many coexisting systems. Young people urgently need investments, not cuts, and as highlighted by a survey conducted by the Citizens Committee for Children with over thirteen hundred young New Yorkers, yet they are emphasizing mental health care, housing, employment with a living wage, and extracurricular opportunities as top priorities. CCC urges the council to reject the budget cuts, deepen after-school and summer program investments, restore funding to crucial probation programs, invest in mental health services, and protect critical youth services, many of which will lose further funding with the termination of the federal COVID relief funding ending and also re-upping everything Lauren said in her, in their priorities as well. Our commitment is to oppose harmful cuts and champion investments that allow young people to reach their full potential. Thank you and we look forward to collaborating with the city council and partners and everyone on this panel right here and on this crucial matter.
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Davis. I'm the Director of Youth Justice and Child Welfare at the Children's Defense Fund New York. Thank you Deputy Speaker and Chairs for this hearing. This is an urgent moment for the over two hundred young people in detention today and for all young people in New York City. So thank you for your attention to the many young people in this room who started their morning outside of this building chanting and demanding the things that they in their communities need to thrive and to promote community safety. I'm looking forward to hearing from more of them today. At the Children's Defense Fund, we work in an intergenerational collective with young people that have transitioned out of foster care, many of whom have also have system contacts with the criminal legal system, the housing system, the public benefits system, the mental health system. The number one thing all of these young people tell us they need is employment. Pathways to true types of compensation, living wages. And what we're doing by taking young people's opportunities away by by cutting off the opportunities that remove them from detention, that take away their summer employment opportunities, that remove them from the programs that are the conduit into the opportunities that many of us in the room have had. I mean, we cut off their number one goal, which is self-determination, freedom, and economic mobility. We need to really make the types of investments that will make a difference in young people's lives. Not the nickel and diming that we're doing right now. Big investments. Big investments that change young people's day-to-day lives, the opportunities before them. And so in addition to some of the things that you heard today, I want to encourage you to focus on safe and stable housing for every young person in this city. Economic opportunities that lead to true, well-paying, professional lives where they can remain in New York and build their lives here. And opportunities for safety and well-being in their communities and in their homes. That's what young people are demanding today and thank you for your opportunity to hear from me.
Thank you. Um, and and just to echo what you were saying, I think, and I say this all the time, if we invest in our young people on the front end, we won't have to invest in them on the back end. And and that's the mindset that we really need to get into and thinking about and I've also been yelling about for the last two years and even before I got into council that we need to reimagine what youth employment looks like in this city. Um, it is not what it used to be and SYP is such a low-hanging fruit. We need to be thinking about how are we getting young people employed throughout the year and meaningful jobs and not stipends and making sure that there's equity and giving them opportunities. And also thinking about vocational skills and employable skills and and how are we investing in those? I mean, Deputy Speaker said earlier, I am sick of hearing about OSHA. It's cute, but enough. There's so many other things that we can be certifying our young people in. Um, it's so lazy and enough of it. Um, and thinking about how are we getting them real skills that are going to lead to self-determination, generational wealth and building our communities because I don't want any of my young people to leave. I'm about y'all building up your community so you could stay. So thank you to this panel. Thank you to these young people who stayed for this hearing, was outside rallying. Give it up for them. We gonna clap for all the young people in here because I'm just honestly, I don't think you guys understand. This is like a dream come true. All I've ever talked about is how are we making sure young people are in the room and like y'all are here. And so this is like something that I talked about coming into council, so I'm like almost about to cry, but I'm not, I'm not gonna be a baby today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Ramon Caba, Sherlacy Vining, Jason Gordon, and Jackie Shelton. You can begin whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair Stevens, and esteemed members of the General Welfare and Youth and Youth Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the of the Center for Justice Innovation to discuss the importance of preventive services for at-risk and justice-involved youth. My name is Ramon Caba, Project Director for the Bronx Community Justice Center. I am joined by youth that will shed light on the on the impact youth programming has had on their life. Today, I would like to to share strategy strategies that will show great process, great process in helping to possibly influence the lives of youth across the center. Projects project citywide, gun violence prevention, youth mentoring, and therapeutic support, restorative justice, place-making, and economic economic opportunities. This work helps to to drive public safety and and provide young people with the tools to with the tools and resources to de-escalate conflict that can lead to gun violence. Heal from the from the harm and historic systemic disinvestment. Develop positive goals and futures. Take pride to to co-create, co-create safe and revitalize spaces in their neighborhoods. And learn how to financially sustain themselves, especially specifically at the Bronx Community Justice Center. I would like to highlight that our programs help youth take ownership and revitalize their community by supporting them to disengage from criminal legal system and move towards positive future in partnership with community youth as part of our place-making efforts. We have, we have been able to transform, transform neighborhood spaces, converting them convening in high crimes areas into places where youth want to inhabit. By creating places that are welcoming, familiar, and conducive to economic development and social interaction, place-making can tip can tip the scales in favor of safe and safe and vibrant communities for youth to be to to strive. Enclosing our youth who engage in our programs have left are left with a heightened sense of ownership, trust, investment, and comfort in their own communities and resources to live higher, higher healthy, productive, and safe life. Thank you for your time and your support.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Sherlacy Vining and I live in Morehouses, which is a a low-income neighborhood with high rates of violence and crime. I've revealed, I've received a flyer from SOS about a Justice Community Plus for an internship. I attended the program because I needed a job, so they helped me with my ID, with my ID, my resume, and my social security card. They made sure I was work-ready. Also, they helped me get closed for the interview that was set up for me. At the time, I was eighteen years old. Since twenty fifteen, I've been an active participant at Bronx Community Justice and Save Our Streets. Both programs aim to put an end to gun violence and refer the community safe though. So far, I have been involved in shooting response, community events, and healing process. I've been involved in so many placekeeping events such as, such as um carnivals, giveaways, school supplies, painting, and so much more. At these events, we encouraged over a thousand people in our neighborhood and allowed them to see that we are more than just violence that helped our incoming. I just want to be a part of the situation to make our community better. Ever since I've been a part of Bronx Community Justice and SOS, doors had opened for me. I've been a part of the Bronx Community Founder Gala that was just recently. Um, I went, I recently just went back to school because I had dropped out when I was eighteen because I didn't feel like I can do it. SOS and Bronx Community Justice pushed me to where I am today. So many doors had opened, like this is my last month of being a participant. I transferred over from a participant to a full-time scholarship with SOS.
Um, good afternoon, Chair Stevens and members of the Committee on Youth Services. Good afternoon, Deputy Speaker Ayala, hi, say Ayala? Ayala, Ayala. And members of the Committee on General Welfare. My name is Jason Gordon. I'm a supervisor of the youth workers in the Assertive and Community Engagement and Success Program, the ACES program, operated by
Program, the ACES program operated by CASES. ACES serves young people living in East Harlem and the South Bronx with two goals: prevent violence and save young people's lives. We work with young men ages 16 to 24. Nearly all are Black or Latino and are out of school and unemployed. Most have prior arrests and are caught up, caught up in cycles of violence in the community. ACES may be the last chance as they enter adulthood to step away from a path of heading towards prison or death. Participation in ACES is voluntary. We take referrals from community members, social service providers, and the criminal legal system. Two of our largest referral sources are the NYPD and the young people already in the program. If both the police and the young people we serve believe in us, we must be doing something right. I'd like to tell you about Jose. Like many of the young people referred to ACES, when we began initial outreach, Jose dodged his assigned youth worker for months. It took four months of reaching out before he finally agreed to a full conversation with the team. Jose was gang-involved, was about to come, become a first-time father, and needed a job. His ACES youth worker helped him to get his birth certificate, social security card, and ID so he could work. Eventually, he enrolled in the ACES work crew where he could earn a wage while learning what he needed to do to become job-ready. Jose eventually got a full-time job. Now, he moves safely around his community making deliveries with Amazon and earning money to support his family. The ACES approach comes from the ROKA, comes from ROKA, a nationally-recognized youth violence prevention program that was developed with public health experts. I recently myself earned a master's degree from Columbia University in social work. And let me tell you, the ROKA program, it works. It works in part because it was designed to be delivered by people like myself. I don't mean just social workers. I mean people who grew up in the streets, who have our own experiences of incarceration and who have been committed to helping, who have been committed to be helping young people in our communities to have a real chance in life. Earlier this fall, I watched as successful CASES youth worker, youth work programs were closed suddenly and without warning due to city budgets and cuts in the Department of Probation. ACES is funded by the Mayor's Offices of Criminal Justice. The program costs about $2 million and... That's my tone? The program costs about $2 million a year, and Mark J. has been a good partner for our program. But it's December now, and we have no contract to assure funding beyond this coming June. The city's investments in ACES makes it possible for our team to work with young people for up to four years because that's what it takes. We believe in long-term work with the young people. Currently, ACES is working with 120 young people in East Harlem and the South Bronx, and we work to see each and every one of them each day in the community at least three times a week. Over the past three years, the ACES team has engaged our young people in more than 3,400 program sessions. Our work crew has separately supported young people to complete more than 1,500 hours of transitional employment. Of those young people in ACES who had open court cases, 85% have successfully fulfilled their court requirements. Every day, rain or snow or shine, in fact, right now as we're sitting here, my team is in the field. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Shelton, and I am a Senior Criminal Defense Attorney on the Adolescent Representation Team at Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you Deputy Speaker Ayala and Chair Stevens for hosting this important hearing. It truly is an honor to be here, especially with as many youth participants as we have had. Brooklyn Defender Services represents approximately 22,000 people each year who are accused of a crime or facing the removal of their children or deportation. Our adolescent team works to eliminate contact and involvement within the criminal legal system for court-involved youth age 18 and under. On the adolescent team, and in my time at Brooklyn Defenders, I have primarily represented young people who were charged with crimes which range from misdemeanors to serious felonies. Brooklyn Defenders also represents people who are accused of abuse and neglect. While the vast majority of these cases involve allegations of neglect that stem directly from poverty, the intervention by ACS can be traumatic for parents and children alike, and it does not provide the kind of support that families and children need. The same agency that investigates and prosecutes families is also overseeing our juvenile legal system and preventative service programming. I am here today to urge the city to invest more deeply in programs for youth that exist outside of that system. In order to interrupt the foster care to prison pipeline, we need deep investments into communities and families, ensuring that communities have access to stable housing, jobs, childcare, employment, after-school and summer programming, and education. It is critical to invest in programming outside of ACS. Contact with ACS, even in preventative programming, increases the risk of family separation, which eventually we know leads to a higher risk of criminal legal system involvement. For youth who have become entrenched in the criminal legal system, fortunately, Raise the Age legislation reform has been critical to providing services for young people, treating children as children in the family court system rather than in the criminal system. This has allowed youth that are up to the age of 18 to receive appropriate treatment through family court. Many of the youth that I have directly worked with and that Brooklyn Defender Services works with have been able to benefit from programming and services in family court as a result of Raise the Age. I have personally been able to witness the transformative power that the right program for the right kid has on preventing further legal involvement. The family court model and the work that New York has done with Raise the Age to catch New York, New York up to the rest of the country with treating children as children is incredibly important work. Successful preventative programs and alternatives to detention and incarceration have to provide the resources that level the playing field and give young people a fighting chance. There is simply no correlation between rehabilitation and lengthy prison stays in facilities such as Crossroads and Horizons. It leads to more system involvement and more serious crime in the future. We thank you for your time and hope to keep families together while providing the individualized care that families need. I welcome any questions at this time, and thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Reverend Wendy Calderon Payne, David Freudenthal, Jamel Burgess, and Jacoina Vincent.
Do you want us to start? Shall I start? Or is someone else ready? Okay. Okay. Good afternoon, Chairperson Stevens and Chairperson Ayala, and the members of the Youth Service General Welfare Committee. You know, I'm Reverend Wendy with Bronx Connect, and you know us, and I think actually everybody knows us. Everybody who was here, and so let me kind of, I'm gonna skip a little bit. I'll send this in. You guys know Bronx Connect. We have been serving young, young people in the court system. We started in family court in the Bronx. We expanded to Supreme Court, criminal court, and then the judges that took our kids expanded us to Manhattan, and then we opened up a Manhattan Connect in Taino Towers. We actually have recently opened up Staten Island Connect, and we expanded into Philadelphia about three years, years ago, right in the middle of the pandemic. In addition to alternative justice programs, we do Cure Violence in three neighborhoods of the Bronx. We also do re-entry and employment services. Because I have to just echo that employment is the most important thing to get young people out of where they are. I would love to say that education is the most important, but most of our young people are reading at a fourth and fifth grade level, so they can't actually function in college yet. Now, they can, after getting a job, make a decision to go back to college, and that's great, and we've supported them through that. But they need to eat, they need to make sure their families are fed, and they need to be provided for. So, we really focus on employment. We also focus on mental health. We were able to launch, we're part of the Atlas Youth Service Coordination Program. We are in seven housing projects in the Bronx and two in Staten Island. And we also have FFT, Family Functional Therapy Services, in the Bronx and Staten Island and Manhattan. Something I wanted to say, extensive research reveals that secure youth incarceration increases the likelihood of recidivism and harms the educational attainment of our youth, and of course, their ability to make money. I mean, we don't, this, we don't even need research for that. Doesn't that make sense to us? So, New York State, can you believe this spends $250,000 each year to detain a young person? All of the ATI programs across the board cost them less than 10% of that. Plus, it keeps them in the community, and it is better for them and their community. Oh, gosh, I'm running out of time. I wanted to say two things. This whole idea of probation, we actually have three WorksPlus contracts. We served 79 people last year. We were only supposed to serve under 60. We got 54 of them jobs, even though WorksPlus is a soft-skills program. Because in my head, it doesn't matter what you tell me, everyone needs a job. So, we get people jobs. In addition, even with those who do get OSHA or, or flaggers training, which are actually high-paying jobs, we got 15% of them full-time jobs, which is, in the union, a living wage. So, I just wanted to say that we need to focus on prevention so that we don't actually have youth committing these crimes that are leading to 15-to-life sentences.
Hi, Chair Stevens and committee staff. David Freudenthal from Carnegie Hall. Yeah. Very good to see you again. I am Director of Government Relations at Carnegie Hall. I'm joined by my colleague Jamal Burgess, who's the manager of our social impact programs, leads a team, boots in the ground, doing the work in ACS. Here to, we're here to talk to you about what we're doing there and, and to, really to highlight the, our efforts to prioritize the, the mental health of the entire network of young people, staff, families, and teaching artists by building a different type of community through the infusion of music, joy, creative expression, humanity, and togetherness. But just wanted to take this chance to talk to you briefly about the work that we've been doing in this space for a dozen years. Future Music Project provides hundreds of kids every year, teens and young adults, opportunities that are justice-involved in secure, non-secure, and concrete care. Opportunities to create, perform, and produce their own original music. There, we do workshops with young people, songwriting, digital music production, fundamental musicianship skills. There are these monthly listening parties. Jamal can talk to that if you want to, Jamal. That feature guest artists chosen by participants at explore different genres of music. We're gonna hold a winter celebration on January 31st that's gonna bring these young people together. It's our first one since 2020 that we've done live. It's our first in-person. We're super excited about it. We hope that you'll come at Carnegie Hall. Look, this work is, is really only possible because of consistent support for arts and culture by the city council and by the city. You know, the, this money is essential for, for healing, for resilience, for, for workforce development, education, and public safety. You know, I join my colleagues in the Cultural Institutions Group of the CIG and the entire cultural sector in calling for restoration of funding to this sector. Money to cultural affairs makes work like this possible, and we, we really urge you to, to, to push back against the administration's two next round of cuts. I know it's not the topic of this hearing, but all of these things fit together. This work is part of the essential, essential services that, that, you know, the colleagues, my colleague here and all the folks I've been speaking to about the, the need for real, really effective resources for, for the young people that are, that we're trying to serve. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I turn to my, my colleague Jamal.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening to the chair and the committee. I don't have a full speech, I'll be brief. I just wanted to acknowledge the young people who spoke earlier and just echo in everything that they said. Thank you again for coming and sharing your voices here. It's so important. Something that I'll also add is that, you know, in the work that we're doing, we're bringing music to these, these spaces, secure and non-secure detention spaces, is not only just to engage in like creative arts and have this program that some of the students had mentioned, but more importantly, is tools for liberation and for the advancement of young people. We are restoring hope and dignity for students, young people who are in these secure settings. Regardless of how much time they are doing, they are still human, and through these programs, our teaching artists are implementing and bringing that practice and framework into these spaces. And so, you know, we stand in solidarity with our colleagues, other organizations, and the young people who share it to advocate for the continued advancement and investment in these programs. So, thank you.
Can I just add one more thing, if I might? My apologies. Just to highlight that applications for the B-Side at Carnegie Hall are now open. The, the B-Side's a program that introduces young people to different career opportunities in the music industry. After a successful pilot last year, the dynamic program is returning in '24 with workshops at Carnegie Hall, March through June. It's for aspiring artists and future music industry leaders. The B-Side provides essential industry-related skills through connections with professional artists and executives, field trips, guest speaker panels, and more. The applications are open until January 4th. We'd love your help in getting the word out to young people about this opportunity.
Absolutely. Send it over to me, and we will definitely start pumping it out and making sure people know about it. And I just wanna say thank you guys for always showing up and, and the great work that all of your organizations are doing. And I know you just said that this wasn't related, but it is related because talking about preventative services is important, and part of that is making the investment, right? And so, we have to be able to invest in programs that are working and that are keeping our kids out of trouble and not just investing in them when they're in trouble. So, thank you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Dr. Rivera, Michael Gross, Star Fernandez, and Monet Smith. You can begin whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you to Chair Stevens and Ayala for this opportunity to testify at today's hearing. My name is Dr. Zalexa Rivera. I'm the Chief Program Officer at Housing Solutions of New York, formerly known as Bronx Parent Housing Network. I want everybody to know that it sounds like I'm the only homeless provider here today. However, there are a lot of homeless youth in New York City, particularly in the Bronx location. Currently, as of two days ago, there was about 1,500 street homeless youth. I currently have 4,000 in my census, giving a little over 2,500 youth that are homeless within my shelter system. The reason for coming today is because we wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that as a homeless provider, we are very dedicated to youth preventive services. We do have two programs that we utilize to make sure that we can somehow break generational homelessness and therefore, as, as well as systemic breakthroughs. One of those programs is the WorksPlus program, which does cater to those persons with programming or re-entry services. We do assist them with resume writing, job placement, and we ensure that they are going into getting some level of employment. The second program is the Connections to Cares program. This one is a very unique program because we wanna focus on the youth's mental health, right? A lot of times, we wanna get them education, and we wanna get them a job, but we never ask them how they're doing. And because they're an individual and they can actually speak for themselves, we want to make sure that while you are temporarily in shelter, that you are at least getting the services. So, we've partnered with local communities such as Sun River, Morris Heights, to try to make sure that our youth are getting those mental health services. In addition to that, we are excited to launch a single-parent program in the top of 2024. We do wanna be able to not only support the youth, but also those single parents while in shelter. I thank you for the opportunity to come and testify on behalf of the organization.
Thank you for that. Hi, everyone. My name is Monet Smith. I'm a criminologist and founder of SAI nonprofit in Brooklyn. So, currently in the state of, city of New York, we have over 500... So, currently in the state of, city of New York, we have over 500, we spend over $500,000 per person in the city for prisons and jails. We spend over $5.8 billion for policing and our definition of public safety revolving in NYPD. Yet, we must acknowledge that these two spending deficits do not correlate to preventative public safety. In fact, according to a research cited by NYU Law published in 2021, each nonprofit leads to a 1.2% drop in homicide rate as well as reduction in violence and crime rates, as well as an overall 60% drop in those violence rates. We therefore must acknowledge that the issue lies in our definition of public safety. We too often make public safety and preventative services a extracurricular activity or a side dish when it is and should be the main course. And then we complain about, you know, the functionality and the recidivism that we're seeing in the youth and then the struggles that these organizations feel to provide when we do not prioritize them in our meaning of public safety, especially in regard to the effect that they have, as we heard testifies from several young people today. So, we therefore must, one, acknowledge that we do not put preventative services as a priority as a city or as a nation. We must, too, realize the faults in not prioritizing preventative work as a public safety measure. We therefore must focus and expand the work of prevention through this nonprofit work. We can do this by, one, implementing in school, working with DOE. I believe that was said earlier in the council in terms of it should not just be, okay, well, maybe a young person wants to do this. This should be an organized system within all of our public schools in terms of that's one place preventatively that we have young people in. So, whenever a kid is struggling in school, a teacher could automatically send them to a community service such as these nonprofits. I myself have a nonprofit, SJI, Society's Justice Innovation Interventions. And we do this youth development work in criminal justice and incarceration reduction and crime reduction through this preventative lens. Basically, with youth development, we help young people in the city discover their passion and we translate that passion to a career, giving other mentors in different career industries such as myself. We therefore see that as a way of closing the gap in economic and social mobility with those communities. Yet, our organization struggles to be in spaces to do this work and have access to the youth. So, there's a direct gap in terms of the work that is being done and access to the youth and also not only providing access, but making it a system in which it is normalized for kids to be able to access. We must realize that capital spent on these programs is capital added to our youth and this is a better return on investment than spending these dollars in prison and punitive services. So, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, contact me and I'd love to work further with this. Thank you.
Come through, Monet, with the numbers. Really appreciate that because I think sometimes you gotta like have data, which is why I'm always stressing out in here around evaluation. So, I do appreciate that and even the conversation about access. I've been talking to a number of providers who have been saying that they have been having trouble accessing the young people. And, you know, I think sometimes what happens is we have a lot of great programs and you want to hold your kids because we get, a lot of programs are funded because of attendance and things like that. And so, we definitely need to get to a place where we're looking at a different set of metrics to ensure that collaboration is fostered and not hindered and get out of this very scarcity mindset. So, thank you guys so much for testifying and I appreciate you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last in-person panel will be Kamel Terry. I apologize if I'm saying your name wrong. Tawaki Kumatsu, Aleah Guillory-Nickens, Batman Who Laughs, and Psycho Wilson.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Kamel Terry. I'm currently a youth advocate with Youth Represent and I'm currently an alumni at Exalt Youth. So, I think first thing first, it's only right that, you know, I give you all just a personal testament of me, my background, where I've been, where I've come from, and where I am today. So, I grew up in Brooklyn, bad star, right? And just to make it very simplified, I had a lot of complications at home, which led to complications in school, right? A lot of internal family problems, right? And because of that, you know, I ended up seeking a lifestyle to fill up holes that I felt that I had in my life, right? There were so many parts in my life that I felt like was just very damaged and I looked to these different sources to begin to recover. For instance, I'm gonna be a little transparent here with y'all. I felt like I'm adopted, right? So, with that being said, I never really felt like I had a true connect with family and it was a lot of issues at home. So, by that, I used to go out and just, you know, participate in gang culture because I was feeling like this was family, right? So, I seeked out all these different stuff, drugs, fast money, because I wanted to look good because, you know, people would say mean things about me, right? And this led to me getting arrested on multiple accounts and this also led to me just being deemed as, you know, a failure, right? This was my proposed and my appointed future. So, with that being said, one day, I met my probation officer and my probation officer referred me to a program like Exalt Youth. So, when I came in there, I was still smoking, I was still drinking, I was still making fast and illegal money. I was still hanging around a crowd of evildoers. So, with that being said, Exalt, they offered me a core curriculum program that prioritized and emphasized on social and professional development training for young youth for six weeks. So, it was paid. So, now I had income. Now, if I wanted some clothes, I could go buy some clothes. Now, when mom ain't got no food in the house, I go buy some food, right? And they also even offered opportunities for me to learn how to begin to take care of myself and start adulting as well, right? So, as I sat throughout the six-week program, I began to see a whole new world that I never knew existed. And that world showed me that living as a young professional in a place like New York City, it was possible, right? So, I then began to, over the course of my graduation, I began to have mentors. I began to have alumni. I began to have all these different things that happened in my life that built me up, right? And I stopped smoking and drinking alcohol. I stopped hanging around in the wrong crowd. I ended up becoming a youth advocate. I ended up growing a good professional background. I even worked as a youth development professional. I'm now applying to college, right? And so much more things. So, I can really testify throughout the course of my three years being at this program. I'm now a changed person with better morals, a better identity. I've never had any kind of contact or run-ins with the juvenile system for the past three years and my relationship with my family is better than ever. I even found faith, right? So, I would say my life is on a good trajectory. I have aspirations as well to also just work in the city council one day. And I would say, thank you. Overall, I'm on a good path, so I really appreciate y'all just for giving me this opportunity just to share a little bit about myself and where I'm at today. So, thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for your vulnerability because you didn't have to share what you just shared and so, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Do I gotta? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Aleah. I'm the current campaign organizer at Youth Represent, which is a nonprofit organization that provides legal, free legal services for young people up to the age of 25 years old. I'm here today as a young person that has been blessed enough to benefit from the same programs the Adams administration is cutting funds from. I just left the rally earlier today in front of City Hall, right outside, and Tuesday in front of Horizon's Detention Center with other coalition members and a bunch of young people like me calling for investments in young people rather than arresting them. On one of the signs we were holding up at both of the rallies, it said, "When leaders act like children, the children become leaders." We unfortunately have a leader right now that believes increasing youth detention rates is making our city safer. His current policies has led to the highest detention numbers in years, which is now leading young people in Horizons and Crossroads to be overcrowded, which is leading them to sleep on the floor. That's shameful. We deserve way better and we're worth more than getting a short end of the stick. The city definitely needs to do better and get our children home. The OCFS also has a waiver that allows for issues like this to happen. We need to work as a collective to end that waiver. Now, in terms of detention centers, there should be, I wish ACS was still here to hear this, but in terms of detention centers, there should be some type of weekly wellness checks if this doesn't happen already. And COs who are abusing their power and mistreating the young people there need to be fired fast and charged if anything. I now have a list of opportunities and resources young people like myself and those who are system-impacted can thrive from. Again, I wish ACS was here to hear all of this. First investments, first is investments and more money into programs like Exalt, Youth Justice Network, Avenue for Justice, Cases, and others. All organizations I know and have seen with my own eyes changed the lives of young people that walked in their door, leaving them as entrepreneurs, artists, leaders in their communities, and more. Then I would say getting rid of programs that seem like an extension of the DA's office and ensuring programs provided are nurturing, safe places that provide stipends, job readiness training, anger management, conflict resolution, passion/long-term goal workshops, which SJI, the program that Monet runs there, doing that. So, y'all should tap in with her. Financial literacy help, help for young parents, housing assistance, and hiring staff that actually know how to work with youth. And those programs, including the ones I mentioned earlier, there should be mental health services that they can receive for free so a professional therapist or counselor that can sit down with the youth that are a part of the program and be able to provide them with what they need. The last thing about programs is that judges should be more knowledgeable on which ones that are out there so they can actually put youth in them instead of straight sentencing them or setting bail. Now, moving on to resources outside of programs, there needs to be more opportunities to make money outside of SYEP. Life doesn't stop lifing when summer's over. Like, you still gotta pay for stuff once summer ends. Like, there needs to be jobs and paid internships available and accessible all year round. Also, the list of things I named earlier that should be in programs should also be in public schools. I don't think that we should have to go through the system in order to get the support we need. It should be met before we even reach the system. So, that's what preventative service looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna make sure that ACS gets your, we're gonna set up a meeting so they can meet with you because I heard you say it several times. So, we're gonna create space for you. My staff is over there. Make sure you give them their number and we'll set up a meeting so that they can hear your recommendations. Thank you.
Mic check. Ooh, okay. Peace, everybody. I might have to turn this down a bit. My name is Psycho. I'm the Youth Development Coordinator of Youth Represent. It's an acronym. It stands for passionate. It stands for strong. It stands for young. It stands for creative. And it stands for observant. These are the ways I am and this is how I define myself. When I was younger, and even up until a few years ago, I've been blessed enough to be in a few different programs that have like ultimately affected the way I grow as a person. When I was younger, I was in a program called The Rites of Passage, which was a young men's group, a young black men's group, a Pan-African black men's group that taught us the importance of challenging misogyny, homophobia, taking pride in like our presence as black men and being more than, than being more than the systemic norms that oppress upon us. I attended a program called Exalt in which we learned how to ready ourselves for the careers and goals we want to achieve. We learned about code-switching and operating in professional areas even when we weren't so professional ourselves. And we learned the importance of networking. When I was on the eighth grade, I was on the high school wrestling team. I mean, I was allowed to practice with the high schoolers as an eighth grader on the wrestling team. And I learned what camaraderie was. I learned the importance of holding yourself accountable, especially when you have something to represent that you don't wanna lose. One of my favorite places growing up was a library. And of course, it was for the books, but there was never enough. See, I'm from Brownsville and as y'all can assume, the libraries there aren't funded well enough to have all the books that one would search, but what really, that one would need. But what really drew me towards the library were the fact that the people there who weren't getting paid enough to even be there were taking money out of their own checks to hold programs to create spaces for young people to come and engage. And they were then also opening up the pathways for these young people to then start internships and work there themselves. De-investing in communities and programs means taking away places like these where youth can grow into being whoever they want. There's no shortage of smoke shops around the hoods. There's no smoke shops of police presence anywhere you go. It seems like there's no end to the budget when it comes to talking about safety and arming literal abusers in the streets. Yet, when it comes to, yet when it comes to providing safe havens, funding programs for our youth, finding holistic ways to resolve conflicts, it seems like the city has no money. Why are schools, programs, safe places, and libraries being defunded when prisons and jails continuously have like an unlimited budget? Makes it makes no sense. Y'all here have good jobs that you don't want to lose. That right there alone stops you from committing certain acts that would, that you, that right there stops you from giving things, that right there. Your job is so important to you that you would then not do things that other people would have to do, would be forced to have to do simply to survive. That is an opportunity that you have because of your position. Many people where I'm from don't have those same opportunities. And de-investing in their communities is further taking away those opportunities. That's all I have to say, man.
Hi, I'm Tawaki Kumatsu. Thanks. Hi, I'm Tawaki Kumatsu. I'm Ms. Ayala. I've testified to you many times, partly in this room, to Noah Vale. Around this room, I see empty seats. Mr. Wrestler. He decided to boycott our First Amendment rights maybe an hour ago. Ms. Lee, same thing. People at this table, they had a bunch of great things to say. With regards to one of the bills that's on the agenda for today, it's about establishing a system to obtain employment and income information from third parties for determinations to be made about benefits and services availability. That can be construed in a variety of ways, meaning if you're a politician, if you've got a job and you're in an empty seat, meaning if people come to your public hearings, testify to you repeatedly about valid issues and people like Ms. Ayala choose to sit in her chair and not do a darn thing while people like me and others suffer, that pertains to the issue of determinations about whether they should be able to keep their jobs as a benefit and services, meaning whether voters should actually vote for them or vote them out. One of these bills, there's a company called NTT Data. The Second Circuit issued a decision against it on Friday of last week. It apparently has a track record of discriminating against people, black people, with criminal backgrounds. I filed, I've got litigation against the same company about wage theft. So, about this issue about employment and income. It's been stealing my pay since 2012. I've talked to people like you repeatedly in City Hall, across the street to Noah Vale. There were public meetings like town halls, resource fairs. Rachel Atchison works for Mr. Adams. She illegally kept me out of a public resource fair on May 23, 2017, in the Bronx Supreme Court. Jessica Ramos, I've got the emails. She's a New York State Senator now. She also was involved in that. Howard Redman was the prior head of security for Bill de Blasio. He spearheaded that at the request of Stephen Banks, who's now testifying about the right to shelter. So, with regards to, yeah, employment and income information, another way to construe that is the city is giving contracts, publicly-funded contracts, to companies like Urban Pathways that subjected me to a bait and switch that I testified to you about previously. So, bottom line is, I've got litigation. You know about it. The reason why you know about it is because I've apprised you about it very clearly in the past. On January 2 of next year, I have two petitions for writs of certiorari to file with the US Supreme Court. Every single person in this room, if they want to, they can write an amicus brief to basically add their two cents to be like, hey, you know what? When somebody kicks the butts of a racist federal court security officer in federal court, maybe he shouldn't be in federal court after defending the guy who killed Eric Garner. he shouldn't be in federal court after defending the guy who killed Eric Garner. I think maybe, that's not really, uh, relevant here. But bottom line is when you write a bill and it's vaguely described, people have a right to testify, um, in a rational manner about, you know, where you're getting information. Are you gonna be getting your information from a third party like NTT Data, a business partner of the city of New York that's still subjecting me to wage theft while I'm sitting in this chair and while you're sitting over there, who, uh, who at the end of the day will do nothing about it?
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey. Howdy. You guys can hear me? Hi, my name is Batman and I go by Batman because I don't represent Bruce Wayne, if you know anything about Batman. Um, if you don't, I'll tell you a little bit. I'm a little nervous, sorry. Um, I consider myself the Batman who laughs and not the original Bruce Wayne, the white man. I consider myself the Afro Latina fighting for the liberation of black and brown people by any means necessary. And I call myself the Batman who laughs because he still fights for justice and he was tainted by society's evils. And even though he was still tainted, he still is who he is. And that also represents who I am and what I believe in and what I do. I'm also a representative of, um, youth justice. Um, Youth Represent, my bad, and we represent, um, youth justice as well as trying to get a bill passed. Sorry. And what I do is I do face painting and blue animals for children. I'm a mobile child entertainer and I got into doing this when I was in high school and middle school. And because I realized that art and expressing myself was a way to connect with other people and express myself, I wanted other people to, and other kids my age to feel the same what I felt like could have been, um, something that could have been encouraged me to stay off, um, what was it, bad energy that was clearly evident around my neighborhood that wanted me to be around. There's people that wanted me to smoke and do bad things, but I had certain programs that I was able to get into and make sure that I was making a positive impact on myself, my family and my community. Um, I was also part of another organization called Black Versus Matter and we helped promote, um, little kids from around the neighborhood, find a place where they can come and be themselves as well as other families and other abolitionists could come and talk about community and what we can do to improve the community as well as help these kids. I would also like to point out different activities we had. Everything was free. I would do face paint drawings for the kids. We would go out, we would knock on some doors, we would help find, you know, whatever resources these families may have needed and bring them together. Uh, we had, um, talent shows for the kids. We had self-defense courses for the kids and we had reading and poetry and much, many other programs and the kids kept coming and they loved it and they gave them something to look forward to. And I know this made an impact on these kids because I would go in the neighborhoods on a day we didn't have a program and they would recognize me. They'd say, hey, Batman, you're doing face painting today. Where are you? Um, and that brought so much joy to my heart because I know this work that we do matters so much and these kids look up to you and they're the future. And if we are not there for them, then the future is gone.
I really, really appreciate you guys. One, for not only being at the rally, but staying and, and giving your testimony. And I like to say, young people aren't the future of the now, right? Like every movement that has ever been done in the United States has been led by young people. Um, and so we, we have to continue to make space for you guys to lead that fight and give you the support and guidance. And I think so often we forget that. And so thank you guys for the work that you do. Ms. Monet, these are your children? These are all your young people from your program?
No.
Okay. Cause I know they said, okay, well, well, this is, you guys are doing great work and I really, really appreciate y'all. And please make sure you get the, um, give your contact information to my staff.
I just wanna add one more thing. There's other young people back there, um, they were too shy to testify, but they're all looking for jobs. If y'all are hiring or internship positions, everybody in here is looking for jobs, by the way.
All the young people across the city is looking for a job because we're at 21%. So I'm working on figuring out how do we reimagine unemployment for young people between the ages of 16 and 21. We're at the highest numbers that we've ever been and it's unacceptable. So that's definitely something as youth chair that I'm really working and trying to push and raise their arms. So like I said, please give information to my staff and we'll definitely continue to have the conversation about how do we continue to push the fight.
Thank you.
Hey, young people, you didn't have to, you don't have to testify. Your presence being here speaks volumes. So thank you for showing up for those who did not testify.
That concludes our in-person testimony. If we missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. We're gonna be moving to remote testimony. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Our first remote panel is gonna be Bishop Mitchell Taylor, Darren Mack, Sharon Amzis, Anthony Robinson and Judith Harris. Bishop Mitchell Taylor, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Thank you to Councilmember Diana Ayala and Councilmember Althea Stevens, the chairs, and to all the council members that participated, to all of the panels that spoke before me. Very inspiring and very important topics that we are covering on today. So I applaud the chairs of this committee for creating this space. My name is Bishop Mitchell Taylor and I'm attending today's hearing to outline a comprehensive outreach and service model that has the capacity to prevent youth in our city's most disadvantaged neighborhoods from becoming trapped in cycles of violence and the justice system, which there is not much justice in. The core tenets of this model are as follows. Viable and supportive pathways to success, credible messengers and community support for success. Growing up in Queensbridge Houses, the nation's largest public housing development in the country, uh, in my 36 years as a pastor for residents in Western Queens and beyond, I've seen the effects of violence and justice system involved on lower income black and brown communities. 20 years ago, I co-founded an organization called the East River Development Alliance, now known as Urban Upbound, to scale up and operationalize successful strategies and support systems that despite the odds exist organically in public housing communities will break those cycles. The first pillar of this model, viable and supportive pathways to success, involves offering youth in our communities a comprehensive suite of services, giving them the tools they need to overcome any and all the predeterminants to involvement in violence and the justice system. At Urban Upbound, our services include workforce development, career development, one-on-one financial counseling, youth and academic development, college access, worker cooperative development, small business support, tax preparation, benefits access, mental health counseling and banking inclusion. That's all anchored by the Urban Upbound Federal Credit Union. We cannot expect our most at-risk youth to pursue higher education or vocational careers to think about credit scores and saving plans, all while ignoring the violence around them, unless we outline and guide them step by step to a vision of career, financial success and personal development that they can believe in. None of these things are novel when they stand individually, but when you can comprehensively integrate them on campuses like Urban Upbound, it becomes magical. The second pillar of this model involves credible messengers, hinges on community outreach and engagement conducted by credible messengers. Outreach staff are credible when they come from the same or similar communities that are conducting, that they're conducting outreach to. This model necessitates that outreach staff, often youth themselves, be given time and space to participate in the same programs that are, that they are pitching to their fellow, fellow community members. This model does not work unless outreach staff believe in the programs they are promoting. At Urban Upbound, we encourage our outreach staff, each of whom are credible messengers, to pursue greater career heights everywhere, opportunity lends. The stories of their success, their successes are worth more than hundreds of hours of flyer, tabling, talking to residents, finding the problems and offering solutions. Furthermore, when community organizers, resident associations, nonprofit organizations, faith leaders come together to promote a growing number of success stories, both big and small, and collectively support our youth in their career, financial and personal development journeys, that is called community support for success. This neighborhood buy-in is key in disadvantaged neighborhoods where many of our young people are desperately depending on them to show up. I wanna take this time to thank Urban Upbound's partners in government who have supported the opening of Urban Upbound offices and pop-up spaces in districts they represent. I welcome any and all of you to join me at Urban Upbound's multi-building campuses in and around Queensbridge Houses and around the city of New York and for a discussion about Urban Upbound's model of serving and supporting at-risk youth. Thank you Speaker Adams, Deputy Speaker, General Welfare Chair Ayala, Youth Services Chair Althea Stevens and participating council members for holding today's very important hearing and for allowing me to give this very important testimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Darren Mack, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Good evening. Thank you Chair Stevens and committee members for allowing me to testify today. And thank you to all the youth who organized and mobilized today outside of City Hall to call on our city leaders to invest, donate rest, our way out to community safety. My name is Darren Mack and I'm a co-director at Freedom Agenda, which is a member-led organization, uh, dedicated to organizing people and communities directly impacted by incarceration to achieve decarceration and system transformation. Um, first I wanna say, you know, since January 2022, under this mayor and administration, there has been a rise of incarceration of our youth. Uh, actually according to the Gothamists, uh, they wrote that youth detention numbers citywide have soared in the past two years from 987 admissions in 2021 to 1,775 in 2022. And this is according to city data. Earlier, um, during this hearing, it was mentioned, uh, by agency staff members, they mentioned the mayor's blueprint to gun violence. And there are some good things in, in that blueprint, but there are also some, some bad things. And one example of a negative thing is that it called for the rollbacks to raise the age and to actually recharge 16 and 17-year-olds as adults, uh, specifically for gun charges if they, if they don't tell who they received the gun from. And this is something that we know that I, this, you know, this mayor has, you know, advocated for and lobbied for and, and that's not a good thing because New York and North Carolina were the only two states in this country that was charged in 16 and 17-year-olds as adults. And that's a shame, you know, especially for New York calling itself a progressive city. But, you know, the, you know, I believe like the Next Steps program, mentoring program that offers mentoring and community support services to youth ages of 16 to seven, 16 to 24 in 15 different New York City Housing Authority developments throughout our city. And unfortunately, this amended mayor administration made cuts to that. Uh, these are the same nitrogen developments that, you know, that the mayor's blueprint to gun violence are, are doing the work in, uh, and, and to try to end gun violence. So I don't understand why a program like Next Step Steps will be, will be cut. Also, the intensive, uh, mentoring Parents and Children Together program, IMPACT, you know, that was cut. And, um, and that's a shame and I believe that those, these two programs funded should be restored. So, and, and how, one of the ways it can be restored, you know, the city council could save $200 million just from eliminating the funding to DOC vacancies that are not being filled for several reasons. And one of them is because no one wants to work on Rikers Island. But $200 million can be saved for eliminating these DOC vacancies and we could restore all the programs and services, you know, in our communities, which is most, you know, which is most needed and, 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 you know, these services and programs, you know, not only need to be restored, but, but actually more funded so it can have the, the, the impact of that we need to, to off-ramp people from incarceration, especially of youth, and to close the pipelines that feed Rikers. Thank you so much for, for having us here today and thank you so much for letting me
Thank you for your testimony. Sharon, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Hi, sorry, I wasn't unmuted. Um, good afternoon, Chair Stevens, Chair Ayala and the members of the committees. Thank you for allowing me to testify on behalf of JCCA and the youth and families we serve. My name is Sharon Amzis and I'm the Director of Second Chances at JCCA. I have worked at the agency approximately 10 years, starting as a preventive worker for high-risk families and I now supervise and provide children with individual therapy, group work and family advocacy. JCCA works with about 17,000 children and families each year, providing mental and behavioral health services, foster and residential care, prevention and educational assistance. Second Chances is JCC's name for our court-involved youth mental health initiative, a program that is funded by the city council. Thank you. Second Chances identifies youth between ages of 12 to 17 with mental health and behavioral needs who are court-involved or have behavioral indicators for court involvement. We try to make these identifications as early as possible. The program consists of free mental health counseling, educational support, substance abuse referrals, family support services, work readiness support and advocacy. Not only are services offered to youth who have already entered the system, but JCC considers referrals for youth who are at risk for involvement, thereby intervening with young people at the crucial early stages when avoiding detention and even avoiding juvenile justice system entirely is still possible. Second Chances also provides a stipend-based work readiness program called Make It Work, which successfully prepares youth to enter the workforce. Due to building a positive reputation and countless outreach connections, Make It Work is extremely successful, often having 60 or more applicants for only 15 open slots per cycle. We provide three cycles of Make It Work each year. We get referrals from a variety of sources such as probation, ACS schools, hospitals, other nonprofit agencies. We have been exceeding both of our targets of 16 intakes every year and 80 outreach attempts. One important aspect of Second Chances is that we do not require insurance, allowing us to work with undocumented and migrant youths who comprise approximately 10 to 15% of the youth we serve. Additionally, we work with families who need help navigating the system to enroll and Medicaid, setting them up for additional services beyond Second Chances. 90% of the youth that had been previously involved with the juvenile justice system do not have any new arrests while participating in Second Chances. Many youth go on to finding a part-time, um, employment as the Second Chances staff. What? Did you say time?
Yes, that was time.
Okay, I'll just wrap this up. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to testify at this hearing and look forward to collaborating to help New York City's at-risk youth receive needed services to move beyond the juvenile justice involvement with the skillset and support to achieve their goals. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anthony, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Chair, good afternoon, Chair Stevens, Chair Ayala and members of the committee on your services. My name is Anthony Robinson and I'm a perfect example of how these, these services that we're advocating for today are crucial and important. I self, being a former foster youth, now turned artist program coordinator here at JCCA. I understand the need in more so the work that we do without children, providing working experience, educational goals, mentoring and coaching to build up our community. JCCA works with about 17,000- JCCA works with about 17,000 New York City children and families each year, providing residential preventive services and behavioral mental health. Our artist program, which is funded by the Department of Procreation, serves justice of our youth in the South Bronx. Our program is fairly new, but we're already making strides in these young people's lives. With 20 applicants, we already have secured four with employment, two with housing resources, and the remaining 12 with other supports that they need and identified areas. Like many professionals who work with children and adolescents, I find that all at-risk and juvenile justice-involved young people are stigmatized due to their past actions. Young people should not be judged solely on their biggest mistakes in their lives. My colleagues and I look at these factors that led them, led our clients into contact with the justice system. And many of these young people in Arches program, in our Arches program, live in a low-income, under-resourced communities where the lack of positive opportunities can lead to develop, to the development of negative behaviors. Many of the adolescents, adolescents that we work with are young parents unemployed and face housing instability and substance misuse. These situations naturally create stress, stress and anxiety in our participants. I found that connecting with these young people through community resources that address their needs often resolves these issue, issues and lead them to become less justice-involved. Our mentors serve as credible messages to our youth and offer guidance for dealing with legal issues and their complex situations. Because they were formerly justice-involved themselves, our mentor's lived experience is directly relevant to, to the situation that many of our participants face and helps us build trust. Learning how to navigate these challenges cannot be taught in a classroom and our credible mentors give adolescents the tools to move forward with guidance and support. While running Arches, I have seen how impactful these services can be for justice-involved people. And to, I'm sorry, and to... I'm sorry. And not alone, not alone.
Time has expired.
Thank you for your time, councilmembers. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. Judith, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Um.
We hear you.
Okay, I'm just getting my video. I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Judith Harris and I'm an attorney with the Legal Aid Society Juvenile Rights Practice, including 15 years representing youth in juvenile delinquency proceedings in the Bronx Family Court. I want to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala and Chair Stevens for holding this important hearing as well, as well as the meaningful and moving testimony from the young people. I refer you to our written testimony, but I will discuss some of the highlights. New York City has the know-how to reduce the number of youth who become involved in the juvenile and criminal legal systems. The majority are black and brown teens who come from under-resourced communities and schools. What we need is the political will to adequately fund comprehensive preventative services as well as increased alternatives to detention and incarceration programs. First, we must target services to at-risk youth through data showing which communities and schools have the highest arrest rates. Then, we must provide needed services early to youth in these areas, starting with young adolescents when risk-taking behaviors take off. These services would include expanded access to mentors, mental health services, educational supports, and jobs, jobs, jobs. Studies have shown that anywhere between 40% to 80% of incarcerated youth have a mental health diagnosis. Yet, too few teens have sufficient access to mental health services. Studies show that students are 21 times more likely to seek support for mental health issues at school rather than at a community-based clinic and that school-based mental health services reduce racial disparities in access to mental health care. Funding should be continued for programs like the Mental Health Continuum, which works in 50 high-need schools in Central Brooklyn and the South Bronx. With regard to employment, one idea is to expand the Summer Youth Employment Program, SYEP, to a year-round program, increase the payment rate to youth, and add more jobs for younger teens. This expansion would be a preventative measure. Further, studies show that preventative services and alternatives to detention and incarceration programs work. They work to increase public safety and reduce recidivism. We must educate judges and prosecutors and the public about the success of these programs and ensure that there is adequate funding. This is especially essential when there are children having to sleep in classrooms and who are deprived of true living areas in secure detention. Where there is a will, there is a way to provide increased preventative services and alternative programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next panel will be Victor Herrera. Victor, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Uh.
We hear you.
I'm sorry. My name is Victor Herrera. Kind of in a place with noise. Uh, y'all can hear me? Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Victor Herrera. I'm actually providing testimony on behalf of my sister. My name is Peggy Herrera and which I support in regards to similar circumstances. Uh, my nephew, Justin Baiga. Uh, just give me a second. I'm trying to pull it up. Wow. I wasn't sure whether y'all had called me already. Um, here goes. Come on. All right, thank you Chair Stevens and Chair Ayala for holding a hearing on preventative services for at-risk and justice-involved youth. My name is Peggy Herrera and I am a member of Freedom Agenda. This is an issue of great importance to me. I have decades of experience working as a counselor with court-involved youth in limited secure placements in group homes. I am also the mother of a young man who struggled with mental health and trauma after the death of his father and who was targeted by and caught up in the criminal punishment system before his life was tragically ended by gun violence last year. Over the years, I have worked with many young people, including my son, who have previously been in crossroads, Horizon, and even Rikers. I can't say without a doubt they are not getting any of the attention, resources, support they need in those settings. How can our city put young, young people in conditions that further traumatize them and then expect them to come out and do better? When they come to us from the juvenile detention centers, we have to undo so, so much harm. I remember a young man coming to us saying, I'm a criminal. I should be on Rikers. The only thing he learned in those settings was how to make a weapon. But in his time with us, he learned real-life skills. I watched him to be able to navigate through frustrating situations where he wanted to respond with violence, but told me instead, I'm using my skills when he leaves our group homes. He wants to do music and he's excited about his future. Even when they have done wrong, these kids are worth investing in. We can do that when they are in similar programs where they can truly build relationships. But there is much more we could do, be doing, and should be doing to get them the resources they need to keep them safe and well in their communities before they ever interact with police or courts. What they need is not that complicated. They need quality ment, mental health curriculum and counseling in their schools. They need safe places to be at. They need access to good jobs and certain options to learn a trade. We also need to support families and parents. So often I see that kids who get into trouble are the kids who are living in poverty. They might start skipping school because they don't have what others have and they're struggling with not being accepted and maybe being afraid of being bullied. If they find someone who can offer them food, money, or protection, they get caught up. Instead of arresting them and funding them into this juvenile detention to prison pipeline, can our city just finally commit to make sure all of our kids have the resources and opportunities they deserve? In a city as wealthy as ours, where money seems to fall out of the sky whenever police or jail guards act it, we have the resources to do it. We just have to act like the lives of all kids matter. We need money to magically show up to meet their needs too. The mayor seems set on doing, undoing so much of the progress we made to keep kids out of juvenile detention. And we need the strong support of the city council to fight for the resources, needs they, they deserve. Thank you Peggy Herrera and Victor Herrera. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. That concludes our remote testimony. If we missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom and we'll call on you in the order of hands raised. Seeing no one else, I'd like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And I'll turn it back to the chairs for closing statements.
Well, I just want to say again, I'm, I was elated at how many young people showed up today to testify to talk about the quality of programming and has been literally one of the dreams that I've had to make young people feel included and heard in this process. And so, once again, I just wanted to echo that I'm elated that so many young people not only was outside at the rally, but stayed for the entire hearing and testified and had recommendations of what they would like to see. So that is a trend in the right direction. Um, and as we continue to think about how do we prevent young people from entering to the juvenile justice system, which is just as important because once they get there, we have already done, have not done our job. So I want to continue to keep that focus and making sure that we're investing our kids on the front end so we don't have to invest in them on the back end. And with that, this, this hearing is adjourned.